... planning board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Ed Miyoshi.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on April 17th and one on May 15th. And bear with me, we have one set of minutes to approve. It looks like Mike, Craig, Steve, John E., and Ed, you are all here. So do I have a motion, as well as myself, do I have a motion to approve the December 19th minutes?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you, John. Great. The first item on our agenda tonight is the Stewart's amended site plan on Route 376. Do we have your plan to put up on the overhead?
Um...
Sit there, Michelle, if you can. Great, thank you. That's good, Michelle. That works. Yep.
My name is Marcus Andrews. I'm with Stewart Shops. I'm here to Florida Board this evening looking for site plan approval. We're looking to remove the existing front concrete curb area near the entrance to the existing shop, located at 860 State Route 376 in Wapahwah Falls. We'd be replacing that front planter area, really would just, we'd pay, we'd go flush with it all around. We replace it with a concrete ramp, stamped concrete ramp, the addition of two bollards, two four-inch steel bollards with plastic covers on them. Mostly just to protect the entrance from oncoming traffic and keep the drive lane the width that it is today. People tend to drift off, widen up if there is no curbed island there. We'd also are proposing, there are planters along the sidewalk on each side of the existing shop that we'd be looking to fill in with concrete. These planters end up unfortunately becoming ashtrays, which become difficult to clean out. We'd be looking, just concrete them flush, match the sidewalk elevation. That's, in summary, what we'd be looking to do. This is just a photo of what exists today and what, this is obviously a different shop, but similar feature of what we'd be proposing to do. In that, it won't be exact, but it does give you an overall view of what it will look like.
Did you want to see that closer, Scott, or did you want?
Yeah.
I thought you were giving us standing ovation.
Michelle, I know you gave us a comment letter for this and it seems like a fairly small change to the site plan. If you want to just quickly run us through and...
Sure. I think a lot of the improvements are really to help with, also with ADA accessibility. They would currently keep, the site currently has 24 spaces and one handicap space and is compliant with ADA requirements and the proposed improvements would just improve the accessibility on the site. The only thing is that they would be removing some existing landscaping.
Right.
And I believe the building department also went out to the site and found that maybe they were not in complete compliance with some of the landscaping that is current, that was currently required on their site plan. So the one thing the planning board may want to consider is seeing if they might be willing to put some additional landscaping in on the site.
Is this where the, there was a picnic table, I think, in place of where there was supposed to be some other, either shrubbery or trees? Okay. Are you, are you familiar with the site enough to know what we're talking about?
Yes, yes. I do believe the original plan for this front planter, one of the sides was either pavers or a stamped concrete with the other side being green space for some form of low shrub or perennial. Not exactly sure what happened, if it was like that from the day we built, but both sides ended up being the stamped concrete, so.
So I think we're not talking about the planters, right? We're talking about the side of the property where there's a picnic table right now.
Offset the thing, because you're right, I don't, I can't see a shrubbery lasting a snowstorm.
Correct, correct. This area... Are we talking this area here?
I think it was in this area here.
Yeah.
If you turn it around, the picture's on, turn it around. But I think, there's the picnic table.
There was a picnic table here.
But they were out of compliance with their original site plans. Did you know where the landscaping was shown on the original site plan?
Here, on one of them. I'm not exactly sure which one.
So that's the issue, that originally there was improved landscaping.
The original site plan had one, plantings on one side, picnic table on the other.
Correct.
Some, at some point during construction or after construction, that got removed and
the picnic tables.
Pavers or stamped concrete got put in.
Okay. Are you planning to leave the picnic tables there?
There'll probably be room for, there might be room for two, yes. In this area.
Is that going to block the entryway for...
No more, no more than this five-foot ramp. It would leave the five-foot ramp in that middle.
It doesn't defeat the purpose of what you're trying to accomplish?
Seems like it does. That's why I'm, yeah.
The main purpose we're trying to accomplish is get rid of trip hazards.
Right.
Right.
These, these ramps end up being, you put this picnic table... This picnic table here, you step off the picnic table, you've got trip edges all around stepping down off it to where picnic table here, it's flush everywhere to step off of.
Yeah, but on that same token, at least at low speed or accidentally a car hopefully won't jump that curb to hit somebody sitting at the picnic table. Once you put it out in that area, you've removed the curb, a car could accidentally back into it.
Which is why bollards are being, which is why we're proposing bollards.
You'd have to load up with bollards, not just at the corners, but maybe in the middle, too.
I agree, I agree, but...
Or alternatively, we won't have picnic tables on the side.
Alternatively, no picnic tables. I agree, but I don't think there's, unless you bollered it like crazy, you're not going to stop a vehicle.
Right.
Unfortunately, we've had a number of buildings be hit. We do now...
But we're talking buildings versus people.
No, exactly, but they do jump, unfortunately jump the curbs. It's unfortunate.
Have the picnic tables there.
That's an, that's an easy option.
Okay.
To, I'm fine with agreeing that.
Okay.
And then again, just, you said you already got the bollards in the corner.
There's bollards in the corner to protect these posts. There's two bollards there, or one on each side.
Is that sufficient, Scott, from your, okay. Michelle, I know if we're removing landscaping, is there any other place on the site where we would want to add landscaping? Or are we fine with the way, I don't want to affect anybody's visibility coming on or off the road or anything like that. So I'm not sure there's a lot of places on this plan where you might put anything else in.
And I'm not sure that there is either. I think it's just to note that it was removed and...
Okay. Just bear with me, I'm making a couple of notes. Okay. Michelle, is there anything else that we should go over with this request? You said the parking itself isn't changing, so we're still, the site's still in compliance with its parking plan?
Yeah, I think they're just restriping the handicapped area, right? And that's fine.
It will require restriping, just with the removal of that. There will be some pavement work to be redone, so yes.
One thing I'd like to add, I'm not quite sure from what source I heard it from, but there was some potential issue about cars that go from the adjoining plaza and whether they cut through here to exit or vice versa. Have you been made aware of any, any issues like that and any possibility of maybe putting a speed bump between the two parcels?
I have not been made aware of that, no.
Scott, to that, that point, I think the issue with coming into that site, the land is depressed in that, that area, so it actually slows down, so it's actually safer if you're going, leaving that site from, from the eastern, yeah, the eastern side of the property. And you're trying to, the line of sight is poor to your left, so people will cut through the other property because it's raised up higher.
Cut through into the plaza property versus trying to exit this?
Exactly. So I don't know if you could put additional asphalt there to kind of raise that area. If you assess it, you'll, you'll see what I mean. If you have a, you know, a small, small vehicle, it's tough to, your line of sight is poor to the left.
What is the issue, what is it, the adjoining property's landscaping, that's the problem?
It's the hedge rope, I think the hedge.
I know we've...
You got the hedges?
Tried to stay on top of him to keep it trimmed down, so I don't know if we need to just visit that site.
It's not even that, it's the, just the property itself. On Stewart's, it's a bit, maybe two feet lower, or I don't know, I haven't measured it.
I would assume you're talking...
The other one, that one, that one is lower than the other side.
I think, I, I'm not, I've been to the site, not in extreme, you know, aware of all that, all those issues. I do know raising that is not an easy process, as far as you're regrading pretty much, you're affecting this canopy to regrade this whole area just to affect stormwater-wise, so it is something we can look at, but I can't promise an easy answer for that.
Scott, is that something you would want to condition for if the board agrees? This is a minor site plan amendment, we would take motion tonight, so is that...
That we visit, the necessity for a speed bump between the two parcels and maybe modifying the profile onto...
Yeah, I'm asking you if you want.
Till we have time to look at it. I mean, I'm fine with that if, if we want to get a condition.
Again, I can't see changing that being an easy issue. That's going to affect the majority of this lot to change that.
Yeah.
Well, if that's true, but that's what we'll determine when we go out to the field and take a hard look at it. We're not going to ask you to regrade the whole site, you know, it's a matter of if you can bring a little shim in there and just, you know, we'll have to take a look.
There are structures there as far as catch basins, which I'm assuming because it's a low spot.
We'll be reasonable. If there's something that's a simple fix, we'll, we'll do it.
As a mod, part of a minor change, are you sure that's really warranted?
Well, it was brought up, I mean...
If you have a low-profile car, it is, it's, it's a dangerous left turn out of there. You have full line of sight to the, to the right, looking west, but east, you're sitting down lower. Just, I would say if Scott, Scott can take a look at it and assess it.
You know, alternatively, you could put a post a no-left-turn sign, but I think that gets even more involved, circulation.
Then people would really cut through then.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Michelle, this, this appears to be a fairly minor site plan change. Does the board agree this is a fairly minor change? We can, if we do, we can act on it by motion, otherwise we would need to hold it over for a formal resolution.
I'd like to ask that if it proves that it is, you know, substantial change, that you come back. If you're not happy with the recommendations, that you come back.
I...
On the whole elevation change.
On the whole elevation change, I do believe if it becomes to be a major issue, we will be back.
Because I really can't see how you can change that without really shutting down both sites for a long time.
Exactly.
Again, I think if it's something that, where it's tripping shrubbery or something like that, if they're, to make visibility easier, I think it's worth the, the site visit to make that happen. But I would agree, if there's any major changes being proposed, Scott, I can't imagine that's where we'd be headed on this anyway, but if there was, you certainly always can come back with us.
We have to see what the curb line falls, like the drainage line. I'm not suggesting that they regrade the whole parking lot, but if it's a matter of bringing in, you know, five-ton of blacktop and just shimming it up and raising the elevation a little bit without changing the drainage, without changing the curbing and, and keeping it limited to just the entrance, I don't think, you know, that would be unreasonable to ask, if there's a site distance issue.
Can we separate the two and give permission to proceed with the...
I mean, there's a standard, you know, measurement for site distance, and either they conform or they don't, so.
Can we separate the two and basically say, why don't we give permission to go ahead with the, the change in the, with the curb, but then make this a separate change that, if they can't find a mutually agreeable solution, come back with you.
These entrances were originally approved by DOT.
On paper.
Any changes?
You know, whether they were constructed, I don't know. I honestly don't know, but it was a concern that was raised, I think we need to look into. That's all I can say.
Okay. All right, so, any other discussion, questions? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve minor site plan improvements to the Stewart's 860 or 376 site as follows, removing the existing front entrance curb ramp and replacing it with stamped concrete, installing two bollards at the end of the stamped concrete area, filling in the planters on the sidewalk with concrete, and removing picnic tables from the site. And that would be a motion subject to a building department review of the egress visibility and if any changes would be required to the plan for that, any significant changes required to the plan for that, the applicant will come back before us.
Engineering department.
Sorry, engineering department. Sorry.
So you're keeping the approval contingent on their review?
On their site visit, yes, just to see if there's anything else needed, and if there was anything else needed, you can come back to us for that piece of it.
Anything else needed as far as that entrance is concerned, correct?
Correct. Correct.
I can meet you Thursday or Friday if you want. So we, I won't, won't be able to meet you next week, so.
Friday may work.
Okay, you let me know.
I'll touch base.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is the Itooth amended site plan on Route 82. Michelle, if I can trouble you again, I want to make sure we have a copy of the plan, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Bob Hamel. I'm with Solar Plus Group located in Hopewell Junction. I represent Itooth, located 1123 Route 82. In April of last year, I presented a application in order to construct a 17 KW ground mount system in the rear of the property. And I come to learn that the client did not have approval for parking lot in the rear. So I was asked to obtain an as-built survey so that I can present it to the board. Subsequently, last week, I found out that there are a couple other items outstanding, which is there's a charging station on the property that never obtained a permit. There's some ADA work that needs to be done in the front of the building to remove a no-parking zone that prevents, or it's actually in the way of the access road that gets to the back of the parking area. And there was some signage, front signage, that didn't obtain a...
The sign was changed.
The sign was changed without approval.
And I think you have a, there's a vehicle, a boat stored at the back of the site?
Yeah, there's a boat stored in the back, so all these additional things that have come up, I have discussed with Dr. Perrier.
Okay.
And he agrees that, all right, we need to address these changes.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is can we separate the issue of getting approval for constructing a solar system and still work on the process of getting the site plan approved that now incorporates all these additional changes?
One of the, I'm sorry, I don't mean to answer a question with a question, but one of the other issues was the septic. Were we, were we about to build a solar farm on top of the septic system? Do you know where the septic is for this thing?
The septic is, it's, actually, it's not on this site plan, but I do have older versions of the site plan that shows that the septic is located to the southern portion of the property.
Okay, so it's not underneath where you're putting the solar farm? That's the only question?
Correct. And one of the additional things that we did to ensure that we weren't going to disturb the property is that this will be a ballasted ground mount, so it doesn't penetrate the ground at all. It's actually sitting on concrete piers above ground.
Okay.
Yeah, but those piers go into the ground?
No, they rest on top of the ground.
They just sit, sit?
It's called a pour-and-place foundation.
On top of the ground?
On top of the ground.
So when the frost moves, these things just kind of float with the frost? Is that the idea, they just...
They can, yes.
Okay.
And they're constructed so that there's flexibility in it to accommodate that, that movement.
Movement, okay.
You said they can, is that what's planned here?
I'm sorry?
Your answer to Scott was that they can be built to absorb the frost heat?
Oh, it is built to accommodate the frost heat.
So in the event that you ever had to dig them up or whatever, you can just move them?
You could theoretically move them.
Okay.
Right. Now, my question really is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pam.
The charging station does have a building permit. It was taken out in the fall of last year.
Has a building, is it a closed building permit? And it didn't get a site plan, minor site plan amendment?
It wouldn't, no, no it didn't.
Okay.
So we can change the site plan to include the charging station, as well as, I think there's a fourth AC unit that maybe Bob Oswald made a, you know, he put three units on the drawing instead of four? Because I don't think it was constructed or installed since we did the survey. So I think that was an oversight on his part.
Okay. Michelle, do you want to just walk us through the parking on the site and your comment letter? And then we can go on to other questions.
So, as we stated, the site plan currently is not in compliance with the approved site plan, in part because there was a parking lot that was constructed, and I don't know if we know the exact year, but I looked at the historic aerials and it was sometime between, prior to 2009, but after 2004, sometime in that time period. And it may have been gravel originally and then paved, I couldn't, I couldn't tell, it looked like it went through a couple iterations, but the parking lot was, was created, it was not created probably to how we would expect a parking lot to be created if we were going to review an entire site plan. In other words, there's a kind of a one-way access to it and it's relatively narrow and I think they have, they've limited it to employee parking and it, it sort of runs along the side of the property and into the back. And so, so basically, we discovered that when they submitted for their solar panels, that this, this parking lot existed that wasn't on the originally approved site plan. And then the solar panels themselves, we would treat as a structure and they would meet all the setbacks and would be located behind the medical office building and would, wouldn't really be visible. So I think we have less of concern with the visibility of that than we do with the existing issues that are on the site plan now, currently. And the parking seems to meet the requirements, the parking in the front of the site seems to meet the requirements for the patients, but not for the employees. So in other words, I need that access parking for the employees in the medical office.
Kevin, remember, how many spots do they need and how many do they have with the things in the backs?
I'm going to have to count that for you. I don't have it right in front of me right this second, but I can get that for you.
That's fine, but the, but the point is they, there is enough parking, as long as we incorporate the back.
Correct. We need the back, I think, to make the parking.
You know, on other site plans, we've certainly designated difficult-to-reach spots as employee-only parking.
Correct, and I believe there's a sign that says, there's a sign that restricts the parking to some extent.
Correct.
Restrictions to employee only, or?
Yeah, I believe.
And I think we should include signs on both ends of the building, showing that it's one-way access, so you don't run into any issues, head-on collision in a parking lot.
One of the issues, I think, too, was the, I'm sorry, Lloyd, I'm...
No, go ahead.
Since these are not going to be up on a building, is there going to be a glare issue at eye level? And would screening be appropriate?
Well, the modules are going to, are at a 35-degree angle facing south, so it's actually at the opposite end of the parking lot. So there wouldn't be any glare in the parking lot, since everything's facing south.
I think there're homes behind it, there's a, there's a hedge rope, then there's homes behind it. Is there any...
The homes are completely, well, actually, the property is surrounded by shrubs and trees.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But you have enough clearance for the sun to actually hit the panels you're positioning, so that you're going to get sufficient power generation?
Right, that's, that's one of the first things we do when we propose a solar system, is to do a solar radiance to ensure they're getting at least 80% of the sun's potential.
And the screening shrubbery that you're referring to, is that, is that evergreen or deciduous? What, so is it screened year-round?
Wasn't actually proposing any screening.
No, is it existing trees?
These are all...
It's, they're evergreens, it's surrounded by...
It's a combination of trees, some are evergreens on the north side, on the west side.
Have you looked at it, Michelle? Are we comfortable that this isn't going to pose any...
The closest neighboring property owner, the closest residential property, it's mostly evergreens.
Right.
Protecting that line. The rest of it is a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees, and it does look like, and there's also a shed that also, on one of the neighboring properties, it also blocks the view.
Part of the view, okay.
And the full height of the system is about 10 feet, so it's, it's not that high up off the ground. Leading edge is three feet.
Mike, did you have any other items?
No, those are the points, thank you.
Okay. So Michelle, with the site being right now out of compliance, are our next steps to have the, have the applicant address that more formally on the plan or request the change in writing? What's, I don't know if we can set this for public hearing or if we need to wait for that to...
Yeah, I think we need to, to get the site plan in compliance. I don't know if, is it an order of remedy right now from the building department? Do you know, Pam? It's been issued? So I think they've, they've gone, the building department has gone out, they've noted the violations and they've asked them to correct those violations, so I think we need to have and certainly some sort of, I know that you, the survey that you recently provided was supposed to be an as-built survey, but it didn't show the stuff that they then...
Right, it's missing one AC unit and the charging station. So I'll update that.
And the parking? Because it's not, I don't think the rear parking lot is approved at all yet, right?
No, it is an approval. We asked them to show it and the lot to be approved as part of this application, yeah.
But we need to make sure that that, the egress and ingress to that employee lot is clear on the site.
Correct.
So you just have to, you know, whatever you need to note on the site for the signage you'll install, or if there's striping, you know, arrows or something to be put on the pavement, something to make it clear so we don't have two cars trying to enter a very narrow drive at the same time.
So I can indicate the signage on both sides of the building, but how, how about ADA requirements for the parking spots themselves? Do you want that denoted it?
Please, yeah.
Scott, the applicant is proposing to address the items from the letter regarding the out-of-compliance items from the site plan, to address them with this application, revising the application a little bit just to make sure that all of the things that were noted are addressed and included in this application. Is there anything else that we need to discuss as far as that goes or any other... Or any other concerns that you have with that?
I mean, as far as?
Sorry?
What was the resolution on the boat? Did they give you a timetable? Because we can give them some time, I mean, to comply with that.
Yeah, we didn't talk about the boat, that's right.
The boat will be removed.
Need a timeframe? Need a month, need two months? I mean, just as long as we know that we can?
It's Dr. Signa's boat, I'll have to reach out to him and see when it can get removed.
Alternatively, we're gonna have to?
It stops snowing, hopefully, soon.
Bring it in as a violation, I don't want to do that, but?
Okay. Other than that, though, the charging station, the extra AC unit, and the flagging of the rear lot as employee parking, and placing it on the plan. I think we've got the plan showing that parking now. We're just gonna make sure that we address those, a couple of other things, before we bring it back in for public hearing.
I think the only thing, isn't there a, like a little pump station in the back? Is there, for the sanitary? Is there a pumping station? I see a vent coming out of a structure, I'm assuming that's some kind of pump station.
I haven't noticed a pumping station. On the southern part of the property?
In the rear, where the rear parking lot is.
In the rear, southern part?
Where your solar panels are gonna go. But, my point is, I guess the parking lot was put in, and whether or not that structure needs to be protected with bollards or something like that, which is something we could take a look at.
Okay. And Scott, you can work with your department to help identify what may need to be added to the plan?
Yep.
Any changes to the plan?
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else for this one? You'll need to just come back to us one more time with all those adjustments on the plan, and then we can set you for public hearing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang in there.
And I think you have, and I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry, one more thing. You have the comment letters from our professionals, correct? There's one for Morris Associates and one for Michelle? Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Hopel Sports Dome site plan on Route 52.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Vada, I am an architect working with Brian Brown Architects on behalf of the Kingdome Project. I'm assisting with the approvals process on the site plan along with the internal clubhouse structure. Firstly, the town of East Fishkill has been integral in providing the necessary direction and guidance in assisting this design team to finalize and develop the site to its full potential in accordance with all local and state guidelines. The team is wrapping up all observations included, but not limited to, the inclusions of comments expected tonight at this evening's board meeting, so that an official site plan may be granted. The submission of the internal clubhouse structure will be submitted to Mr. Bryant and Mr. Renia, who is completing the peer review on April 13, 2018. We're addressing some minor comments and some life safety concerns, which have now been resolved, and are implementing and coordinating these on the permit drawings. We anticipate the assistance and expected review from Renia and Associates with the assistance of Mr. Bryant, a building permit that can be issued concurrently with the approved site plan bringing the project to fruition and operational sometime September or October of this year. In summary, having met and fulfilled the requirements set forth for the town board, and any additional considerations tonight, we are excited to present the realization and the revitalization of East Fishkill with the Sports Kingdome. With that, I'd like to introduce Chris Lepine from Chays &amp; Companies, who's gonna address any site comments that the board may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I think everybody's aware of this project. You granted site plan subdivision approval on October 21, 2014. Subdivision was filed in June of 2015. Site work began in 2000, March of 2015, and the foundation work began in October of 2016. All the while, the team was still trying to address the outstanding comments related to the site plan approval. The construction has not gone as anticipated, I think we can all agree to that. The team's extremely disappointed, as well as the town. There is a number of unexpected setbacks that were encountered. The partners have worked diligently in trying to address those. They've developed a revised strategy and schedule for moving forward. Dave alluded to some timeframes earlier in his discussion. Once again, they want to reiterate how patient the town's been in assisting the applicant moving forward with the project despite the setbacks. They're determined to maintain this new schedule. The expectation, as Dave said, is that they're looking to have this project completed by the end of this year. This application now, and the applicant, is more focused on moving forward with this, and rather than dwelling on the hindrances that have created those setbacks before them. What I wanted to share with the board tonight was, from the time you last approved this project, the team's been working with Morris Associates, the town planner, and Hudson Valley Engineering. And there's been some changes to what was approved by the town. And what I did on this plan here, which we've got blown up, and it's a little difficult to see, but I also have the rendering here on the easel here to kind of walk through, is, I want to walk through some of the changes that have developed since the last time. What hasn't changed is the size of the dome. It's still the same, almost eight acres. The parking hasn't changed for the site, it's still 312 onsite, 500 offsite, which meets the parking regulations. There were a number of outstanding comments from Morris Associates related to the stormwater pollution prevention plan and the erosion semi-control plans. Dialogue with Pete Zataro's indicated that we're in a good place right now, where they feel comfortable. There's some minor tweaks, but nothing that's going to change the substance of the design that's put forth.
Still have a SWIP that you're submitting to us, or does he have a final proposed SWIP?
He has a SWIP, and I believe the comment letter that came last Thursday from his office, there were a few minor comments in terms of dressing up some appendices that are in there, and we've already began working on that.
Okay.
Some of the minor changes in this was, and they're really insignificant to the overall project. The previous project was proposed with asphalt curbing throughout the entire project. Based on the extensive maintenance that's gonna take place and snow removal, the applicants decided to switch to a concrete-type curbing throughout for longevity and durability. The, this particular area over here, and the, let's start with the northwest corner here. This area was basically, you had the roof dropping down into kind of a paved area with additional pavement here, and then we had parking. There was a monotony of pavement in impervious area in this particular location. One of the changes that were taking place between site plan and refining it with the construction plans was, there's an introduction of a couple of catch basins along this corridor. The parking was shifted a bit to the west here. And this area, which was previously proposed to be impervious, has been opened up to be a bioretention area, where we have the ability to also incorporate some additional landscaping in it, and serves as a runoff reduction practice, which helped address some of the concerns raised by Morris Associates. We also ran a sidewalk along this corridor here, and to try to break up the pavement sections between the two, we've introduced a stamped pavement section here to navigate the pedestrians that are coming from the overflow parking. Similarly speaking, we had some other modifications in the southwest corner here. We had parking almost up against the building here, and we had no opportunities for green space. We had a, kind of an, we had an island here between the parking, but the island was all concrete paved. It was serving as a sidewalk. So, what we did was, we shifted, once again, the parking to the west. All the stormwater was flowing in a direction towards the actual dome itself. We incorporated another bioretention area here with some additional landscaping. And we also took a sidewalk that started routing pedestrians away from the parking and alongside of the building. So, we did a couple of things by providing the pedestrians with the safer means of travel. And we've also provided some greenscape into this, and managed some of the stormwater concerns by introducing bioretention areas on the side of the site. There was also some collaboration between the partners in Royal Carding as to the actual solid waste that's going to be generated. It was recommended that a compactor be introduced into the project area. Slight modification to this refuse enclosure area, where a compactor was introduced with some recycling bins. And as is the case, when you're introducing a compactor, you should have a concrete surface as opposed to an asphalt surface, so that was another change that was made. There were some concerns raised by various consultants as it relates to the stormwater management basins located in the front here, and on the western side here. Some of the slopes were proposed to be stabilized with a fieldstone or a riprap. Concerned about the aesthetics of that. We were able to regrade some of these slopes to be a slope that's conducive to establishing grass with some erosion control matting. So, that was some changes we introduced in the northern portion and the western portion of the site. Another change that was made was, the previous plan had, all these islands in the front were all concrete sidewalks within them that were approved. The limited landscaping was on the northern side and these little bit of islands out front. But each one had a sidewalk up the middle of it that was five feet wide. We started thinking about the fact that cars are going to be probably parking over the curb, encroaching into the sidewalk area, and that would reduce that to about three feet. Then we started thinking, well, the parking actually takes place at like a Galleria. Most people walk up the drive aisle as opposed in the center, along a concrete curb. What that allowed us to do was, we eliminated that concrete curbing, which reduced the impervious area in the front of the site by over 6,000 feet. I recall from working on Orthopedic Associates, I also recall during the review of this application, anything that can be done to reduce the impervious area that contributed to the pond would be a benefit to the people of Lake Village. The portion of the property here on the east side for building Fields III and Fields IV, the town had asked for, there's always some sort of a topographic difference there that had to be achieved by the use of retaining wall. There is a modular block design that's been presented to the town, that's now become part of the overall plan set, and that's another change that was incorporated. The, the concern on the front portion of the extended detention basin one and the extended detention basin here was based on the steep slopes adjacent to South Drive and Research Drive. There were guide rails introduced in the event of cars possibly going off the road that would prevent them from going down the steep slopes. Each one of these ponds was fully enclosed with a post and rail fence and a steel mesh, black-coated 1-inch squares going around it to prevent guests from going down into the pond or any sort of animals.
Chris, isn't there something very similar to that there now? I seem to recall it was like that. Like when IBM built those big, the small, but with the huge cables.
I think some of them are for the guide rails, but some of them have been impacted during the course of construction. One of the things they had to do was come in here and regrade this pond, so as a result. So, and Scott brought up a valid point, that you certainly need some sort of guide rails along that corridor. And so, that's being reintroduced.
Thank you.
The guide rails on the west side along South Drive, these guide rails are going to be installed, and the materials are gonna be to DOT standards in the event that the town ever decides to take ownership of the road. That's an option that the town has before them. Another slight modification was over here at the airlock area. And once again, it's, it's, you're not even gonna notice it, we just shifted the low point. The low point was actually against the airlock before, and because of the fact that it's gonna be opening up and closing often, we shifted that away, so no ponding occurs adjacent to the airlock area. Different sorts of pavement patterns were provided for this plan, which introduced heavy-duty pavement for where, areas where you're expected heavy loading from fire trucks or any sort of snow plowing equipment. And we had light-duty pavement sections for where there's just general parking going. And we have some concrete sections that we've provided. And that's kind of the overall picture of the site plan changes that we've made. We're more than welcome to entertain any questions, which I'm certainly the board may have on this project.
Okay. Let's, do you have any sort of calculation that tells us how much you've reduced the pervious surface?
In the front?
Sorry, the impervious surface?
In the front, we reduced it by 6,000 square feet.
Okay, and what about on the side, where you said you've now introduced the bioretention basin and some of the?
I'd say we, I don't have that number in my head, I'm trying to work off of. I'd say we're probably in the 5,000-square-foot range.
Okay.
Used to be double the?
Okay.
That's about it.
That's fine, that's fine.
That was my application.
No, you're fine. Don't worry. Okay. And Scott, I thought you had mentioned there was some other changes? Are there other changes you're gonna go over tonight?
I'd like to just up a few that I don't think Chris got to, in no particular order. One is, the original resolution included for the import of 7,000 yards of fill to complete the site work. And I think now it becomes evident that you're gonna have excess fill. I don't know that they know exactly what that quantity is, it's kind of substantial, so we're gonna have to amend that permit to include the export of fill.
Okay.
Another item?
Was any fill brought on-site in anticipation, or was, is all of the soil that we see there from the site itself?
There has been fill brought on-site for the bedding in the foundations of the concrete footer going around the dome, and also for beneath the actual floor area.
That's more an exempt item, though.
Yeah.
Structural fill's exempt, so?
So, there's a pile to the west and a pile to the east on the site right now, right?
That's excavated material from?
That's excavated from the subjects, okay.
From the site, correct.
All right. And that's, Scott, what you're talking about needs to be?
Amended.
Removed and?
Once I get a better handle, but we know it's not gonna be an import, it's gonna be an export. We may want to know where it's going, how many truck loads, that kind of stuff. It's a pretty, as everyone sees, it's a pretty good pile, so?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and there's also, and Scott, you brought up a good point. There was some regrading that took place over here, so we could probably run a new calculation on the cotton fill for this, to give you that exact number.
Okay.
I mean, we can, I mean, being that it's kind of a large number, I think just a range would work. We don't have to nail it down to the yard, but if we can get within, you know, and just be a little conservative?
I think it's more just understanding the period of time where we'll have the excess truck traffic and what we're, you know, roughly what we're expecting, that's usually what we've asked for.
Another item we've discussed is kind of tightening up the lighting plan. There's a couple of areas that we had some concerns, maybe Michelle wants to speak more to?
Sure.
Go ahead, Michelle, if you want.
There are two staircases that lead back behind the site towards the overflow parking area. And we just wanted to make sure that there is appropriate lighting there for safety and that people could see where they were going.
Correct.
And then, along the dome, along the side of the dome, from the parking area towards the front entrance, there was inadequate lighting. So, we asked that we just add some lighting along that pathway, the pedestrian pathways, so that there's lighting wherever there's pedestrians gonna be walking. And then, there were bollards proposed.
Right here.
Yep, and we just wanted to get a better sense of the illumination levels from those bollards, and maybe, you know, just make sure that we're consistent.
So that's, okay.
Yeah, it was pedestrian lighting. So I don't know if you're going to stick with the bollards or if you're going to go back to, they had, I guess they were sort of like street lamp type lights in other locations, so maybe we were thinking-
Yeah, we had the street lamps along the Route 52 corridor here and then coming in along the drive. And then this particular area was just the small scale bollards along the pedestrian path there, and then we came back to our regular bollards on-site. One of the other things that we're, and we're actually working with Musco right now on this.
Okay.
You've asked us to take the previous temporary lighting that was going into the overflow and provide you the photometrics for that, so we're going to do that using the Musco lighting fixtures.
Okay, so they, they have temporary lighting that they were going to use in the overflow parking areas. You may recall this from previous discussions. When they need to use the overflow parking areas, they want to bring temporary lights in so that people can see where they're going, and we just wanted the details of those temporary lights.
And one of the other things I just wanted to bring up to the board is the lighting on this side of the dome, we had, was based upon the actual tall mounted light fixtures for the ball fields. Since that's going to be a part of Phase Two, what we think we're going to do is use the similar style fixtures that we have in the parking lot just to illuminate this walkway along here. So that's something that's being worked on right now, and that'll be incorporated into the lighting plan that you'll eventually say.
Just going back, Chris, was the intent that the ball field lights would be on in the winter time just to illuminate the path even though there's no baseball?
Correct, that's what-
That was the original intent?
That was the original plan.
There's a couple of reasons to go back and revisit that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And you mentioned phasing is, has the phasing changed from the original plan?
No, the Phase One is the dome, all the associated parking and stormwater management facilities. Phase Two is the actual outdoor fields and the artificial turf.
Installation of the fields, okay.
One of the other things that we also discussed that we're in the process of doing is, if you recall during the resolution, there was a 10 or 12-inch water line that the town wanted to be identified at the early stages of construction to look at if it's something viable in terms of retaining for your future use. This line has been damaged during construction, some of it based on a condition is not something that's viable to be used. There's discussions right now about placing a future line as part of this Phase One construction in the event that the town eventually takes over the road and they have a new water line placed.
Okay.
Scott, where was that pipe going?
It came from the old IBM well field and went back to the storage tanks or in that vicinity in the rear of the property.
It wasn't part of the recent water project?
No.
No, it was, remember the pump house that was out front here?
Oh, yeah.
The pump house back and then-
Right. So the idea is if we could have repurposed that line, that's what we were evaluating, but now we may just, just replace it and incorporate it into the right of way. And we're, we're working through what kind of tweaks we can make with the overall water, water line plan to, you know, incorporate that into it, make some adjustments. So we're working through that. The other thing, I guess, a couple more items if I made, Chris, right?
Go ahead.
If you recall, there was a, what we call a cattle crossing, similar to Hopewell-Glen-
Yes.
-crossing, South Drive, that, you know, initially, we thought things would have been built out by now. There wasn't much going on in the rear parcel, but, you know, things were starting to warm up back there. So I had expressed a concern about installing it later rather than sooner and then the impact to the traffic on, on South Drive. The dome people started evaluating maybe an overhead structure, and they presented some ideas on that at our meeting. And then from that, it kind of, through some brainstorming and whatnot, we kind of morphed into possibly an at-grade crossing similar to the one that we have here at the Muse. Although we were trying to incorporate more of a red light feature versus just a flashing light feature. So that's another thing that we're, that we're looking at to try to incorporate.
Is that going to be far enough back that we don't have to worry about the light?
Well, we, that'd be part of it.
Or part of the timing of the light up at 52?
There's a fixed distance that you have to be off the DOT road, which we think we can achieve. And, and if we go that route, we would also add one on Auditorium Drive.
And Research Drive at both of the crossings there.
Yeah, and at Auditorium for the schoolchildren.
Okay.
This crossing comes right over here.
Right.
So-
So that's something that's in, we're working on now.
So that tunnel is no longer on the table at all?
Well-
Or just still just researching alternatives?
I think in their mind, it's no longer on the table. I think they run into some elevation issues. It really wasn't engineered completely initially. It was kind of left for later on, but now we wanted to bring that and take a hard look at that.
That was one of the things the team took a look at between the site plan approval and where we're at now. We actually started laying in the hard grades for it to be handicap accessible and what the wall heights are going to be, looking at particular tunnels, looking at the clearances because there is new electric being brought in, there is new gas being brought in, we have to have certain separation distances. And then we looked at what the impacts were on the west side, where it created a long and, and actually I have a plan here that I can show you. So, looking at this plan here, this is where the actual entryway for pedestrians are for Fields One and Two over here. So individuals who are coming here would come across to the west side and then have to walk about 150 feet back just to get to the main entryway. And this would have been all retaining walls and ramps with landings along the way. One of the benefits of this at-grade crossing is if we can incorporate it at this particular location, which is the entryway into the fields, we gain a considerable amount of distance from the intersection at the light as well, which would allow the queuing to take place on the property with less impacts to the signal. And as Scott said, it's a collaboration that's going to have to take place with Scott, Hudson Valley Engineering and the DOT.
Okay.
And then the last update is, I think through the permitting process with DOT, it's come to light that DOT wants that traffic light reactivated as, as part of this project, not waiting some later date, but they, they want that traffic light operating when CO is issued for the, for the sports dome.
So we were informed in May of 2017 that there had been some back and forth between Hudson Valley Engineering and the DOT, and we were informed by the DOT at a meeting at their office that they wanted the existing light reactivated, and they also asked if the signal loops could be replaced. One of the quagmires that we find ourselves in is that particular light was owned by IBM, and it was transferred to Preferred Development. Preferred Development is the current owner of that light. So the owner of that light is the one that's responsible for making the changes. They're also responsible for paying the electric and the maintenance for it, which hasn't been paid in the last, you know, 12 or 13 years to the DOT. So one of the things we're, we're working on right now, the DOT would allow the sports dome partners to do the work on this light and potentially, I don't know if it's called an ownership or, basically they're the individuals that are paying the DOT to maintain it and for the electricity to be provided to it. One of the concerns that the applicant has raised, and we've raised this with the DOT, is when the rear of the parcel develops and if there are further modifications needed to the light, who pays for that? And who is responsible for paying for the additional, if there's any additional maintenance and the energy charges? We're trying to work that out. It's, it's in the applicant's legal counsel's hands.
And I think we're looking at that as well. I have some updates for you on that, but I think we, I think we have something that'll, that'll work for you.
And, and one of our-
It's not unusual to do some sort of shared agreement for something like that, right?
Well, I think the intent would be for as long as it's only the sports dome utilizing that signal, that they would bear the expense of operating it.
Sure.
But at the point in the future where there's other parcels that are developed and other users, then they would all share in that, and the town would get involved in orchestrating that.
So until that's squared away, the DOT won't approve any lighting, traffic signal modifications because somebody has to-
I think we can get that resolved in short order.
That just to give you an idea of where we're at with the DOT. We are, we're down to the wire with the Department of Health. The only thing that's, they gave us five additional comments. Three of them, which I have the information from Scott to give to the Department of Health. And the last one is they're just asking, one of them's a minor tweak as a labeling issue on our plans. They've asked that an updated hydro test be conducted out on Route 52. The last ones that were conducted were in 2014. So we understand that that can't be conducted until April when it warms up this year and the applicant's ready to go ahead and do that work. So we can provide it to the Department of Health and finalize our approval with them.
Yes, I guess one other update is at the time of the original approval, we did not have a connection point for, for sewer at the time. So, so since then, we've constructed our pump station, it's been, certificate of completed works has been issued by the Health Department, and we're ready to operate, so.
Okay, so the site has both water and sewer available to it now?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just with regard to the building itself, and Scott, maybe you mentioned this and I missed it, I, I understood that there were originally some doors that weren't going to be constructed that now are or were incorporated into the-
Yeah, that's another good point. Yes, we discussed that. Maybe you want to-
Doors for-
Egress.
Egress.
Larger vents.
At one point, it was, and the original plan has proposed for them to be bulk-headed.
I can, I can speak up to that.
Yep.
Great. If you don't mind, just come, yeah, come up to the microphone for us.
I've prepared the response letter for the clubhouse and the, the dome drawing itself. All of the doors were going to be installed immediately. There would be no openings with blocked up and taken out at any special permit event. All of those doors would be installed immediately, which makes it even easier for egress purposes inside the dome structure itself.
Okay. So I know at the time that we looked at this, we had talked about the ability to host large events and things like that. These, the purpose of these doors would still be to allow egress upon conclusion of an event like that or turnover of like teams or something like that?
That's correct, and that would be based on special permit.
Okay.
Completely separate from the daily use.
Right. So, so just, just to reiterate, and I, because it's been a while since we've seen this, you know, at the point where you're having at the site one of these special events, that you're still going to need to work with the town to make sure that there's adequate traffic controls-
Absolutely.
And things like that.
Absolutely.
So there may be conditions on a permit like that or limitations based on what you're proposing in times of day and that sort of thing.
And we're ready to comply with-
Okay.
Whatever constraints are- Is there, is there any updates on that point? I mean, do you foresee any large events sooner rather than later once you're open now that things are- There's nothing booked as of right now. I think it'd be hard to say we're going to schedule a concert until we have everything kind of- No, I just didn't know if, you know, a few years down the road now that- No, I, I, I think that- Developed or you had more plans in- There's a lot of excitement about the dome itself, and I spoke to the owners earlier. This dome is a lot bigger than anybody can possibly imagine in this room, the effect that it's going to have on East Fishkill in the state of New York. People around Connecticut and New York are talking about it, and people are excited about it, and that's a great thing.
I was going to say, for what it's worth, it's tough to live in this area and not be part of the anticipation of that thing.
It's, it's, it's exciting. It's thrilling, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, at our meeting, it was discussed the possibility of putting a storage shed on the site. Is any more discussion taking place on that?
Yeah, right now with regards to the storage shed, their focus is in this particular area, which is away from all the activity in the front.
Okay. So you've talked about a lot of tweaks to the plan. I don't think, at least nothing I heard seems alarming. In fact, I hear you're making improvements to the plan that are probably going to make the site more usable and, like the reduction in impervious surface, although it's probably minor in comparison to the whole thing, but-
It's minor, but I think the people of Lake Village would appreciate it.
Every little helps, absolutely.
Also added bioretention areas, so, you know, you couple that with a reduction in impervious, so they have made some gains.
Right.
Or decreases, I guess, is the case.
Yeah, yeah. So, Chris, when are you thinking you're going to have a final plan resubmitted to us? And, you know, we, we need to move forward to review those more formally with the board. Michelle, I guess I'll look to you, does this, these changes, many of them would have been considered, I think, I'm going to call it a in-the-field sort of construction-type changes, but a couple of them wouldn't be like the crossing and things like that, so I'm assuming we're going to need to put it back into a public hearing. So we would need final plans, we'd need to be able to move along in that direction. So what's your timing as far as being able to finish all the revised plans and get them resubmitted?
We are, I, I think are only outstanding one that, well, let me just take a step back. All the changes I spoke of earlier, they were part of the submission package.
I know, but you said you have things like the crossing, like the street crossing, like the light and like the lighting plan and some other things that you don't have nailed down yet.
The updates and what? No, those, those came out of a recent meeting that-
Okay.
Were past our smells. I just, I just wanted to just clarify that some of the earlier changes I talked about.
I'm sorry, I understood, understood.
We are, we're probably three weeks away from dressing everything up. Musco is probably two weeks is what they've informed us. And we want to get our arms around this crossing signal as well. It's not something that's a standard detail. It's something that's going to require a little thought and design that goes into this.
Okay.
So.
It's like a month.
Just if I may, I don't know that we're still beyond the limits of a, of a minor amendment given the magnitude of the project. I think the larger things are the activation of the traffic light, which was discussed during the secret process. It's just kind of, just moving that ahead a little bit. We're potentially eliminating a cattle crossing to an at-grade crossing, but I don't know that in and of itself would trigger a public hearing. So I just, you know, maybe wanted to have a little discussion on that, whether we really need a public hearing or not.
That's fair, but we just went through about 15 or 20 different changes we're making to the plan, so.
Yeah, but a lot of that was in, in response to, you know, outstanding comments from Morrison and myself, you know, getting them cleaned up and incorporated into a final plan, so. I don't think there's, I mean, you're not adding a ball field, there's no increase substantially in lighting, right? Visible from 52.
I mean, most of the lighting would already-
So, Michelle, I mean, what about the change to the drainage with bioretention basins and things like that? We don't have to recirculate anything or bring-
I think, I mean, the way I look at this-
We don't have to, I know we're kind of talking about this for the first time tonight. If we need time to think about it, I'm okay with that, but-
Well, I think the, the area that we're showing was already shown as disturbed area, so it's, if anything, the bioretention brings it back more to a natural condition than it, than the impervious surface. So I think that's a net gain for-
The intent of the-
And how do we revise a cut and fill permit without having a public hearing?
I don't know. Tom, can we amend a cut and fill permit with that?
From, from fill to cut?
Well, yeah, granted, one, I'd have to take a look at the cut and fill, but I, I would have-
Because we're going in the opposite direction now. They were bringing fill on-site, now they're removing significant fill.
I know, but I would agree with Scott that with respect to the other changes, while in a smaller project, they would see substantial, I think. In this magnitude, it's, it's minor details and such things as the, the basin change and everything, really things that as a project progresses could be done at various times, so.
I agree, much of it would, could have been considered field changes.
I don't think it's the type of thing you could approve by verbal motion by the board.
But we're also removing sidewalks from a parking area. We're doing a lot of, and, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. Anybody who's ever been to a shopping mall, there aren't sidewalks normally, so I'm not, I have personally no issue with that, but I think it's, it is a change to the plan that we just need to be able to see it in its totality. And if, if the board decides it's minor, I'm, I'm fine with that, but we're talking about changing special permits, we're talking about some other things here that I just want to make sure we review it.
And I ask Tom's guidance, says it pertains to the excavation and mining permit if, you know, typically if a project's before the planning board, it's the planning board that issues that excavation and mining permit.
Right.
If it's not before the planning board, then the building department? Or, or is it the zoning department issues that?
You know what, though?
Zoning? So I don't know that we couldn't take, because they don't have a final number on the dirt
So I don't know that we couldn't take, because they don't have a final number on the dirt yet, and it may be a while before they have a final number due. I don't know if we could kind of pull that permit out from the planning board and just have them go to the zoning board when the time comes and they can have a public hearing specifically for that excavation and mining permit once they're getting it over.
Why wouldn't the planning board just have that public hearing?
Well, let's say they're not going to have a number for six months and what that's finally to-
Or do it separately here, if that particular, okay, fine.
I, I could, I could get that number in a week, but I, I do think, if we recall, we did have a excavation in this particular location here, which was going to be that aggregate. So that is going to take away from some of the fill material that we had on site. So there may be, we got to go back and revisit the numbers because there may be some additional volume that's being removed as a result of that, so that we may be closer than what we're anticipating right now.
Okay.
So. So we would go back and, I'll give you this information within, you know, I can show the location of the lighting if you want on the, I mean, the signal pedestrian throughout the site, and I can provide, come to the board with more detail if you want, and then I can expedite this, where you can get it in, say, two weeks, or I could wait a month to do that whole design.
Based on the timing that you've expressed that you want to be able to try and open this site-
Yeah.
This board right now meets monthly. We have the ability to schedule a second meeting in any given month, so I think you have one of two options. If it's going to take you three or four weeks to submit again, maybe we would look at holding the interim meeting that, on the first, first Tuesday of May, to be able to go over it. Otherwise, if you think you can submit it within two weeks, our next meeting is April 17th, and we could put you on again for discussion and maybe a final decision on any of the changes.
I don't think we're going to have the crosswalk nailed down in two weeks or three weeks, so I'd push it off that month, but maybe at that point we can just-
Well, I don't have, we don't have to formally schedule anything right now because this is, it's not on for public hearing, it's on for discussion, so if we need to schedule the interim meeting though for the first Tuesday, Scott, of-
The money you need to have the crosswalk approved as well.
So Scott, if we need to schedule the interim meeting for the first Tuesday of May, Pam, do we have sufficient time for notice if we wait to do that until April 17th, or would we need to do that now?
We need 20 days.
We need 20 days. So realistically, I'm going to recommend that you ask us to have you come back on the first Tuesday of May, unless you're willing to wait until May 15th, which would give you roughly seven weeks, eight weeks.
Let me, let me just ask this one question. So if we, if we made the plan changes and we gave the location of where these pedestrian signal at-grade crossings are going to be located-
The only problem is having an answer that it's going to be acceptable in that period of time. You can show them.
We could show them, but what I'm-
Discussion purposes, I mean, we could do that much.
That gives us some time before the next planning board meeting to further work out any specifics and whether or not this is a viable solution that we can bring to that planning board meeting, if we went with the April, April meeting.
And I think maybe at that point, we would have run through all the changes. If it's going to require any type of public hearing for the special permit, we'll understand that. If we want to bifurcate it, I'm fine, but-
We can get just-
I want to make sure we have our ducks in a row because you're expressing a need to have a very tight timeline here.
Listen, we-
And I think everybody would probably like to see the site a little more finished.
Yeah, the people back me would.
Yeah. To speak more about the crosswalk, some of the details we talked about, okay, so the original plan was for a cattle crossing, we were fine with that. The town is absolutely fine with that. They had some elevation issues they felt were difficult to overcome, and they wanted to go with an overhead structure. I think the, the overhead structure, it has its share of challenges, but in addition to that, the town board would have to approve an overhead pedestrian crossway, overhead pedestrian crossway over a town road, okay? And not quite sure how-
And who would own that for maintenance?
Exactly, maintenance and all that stuff.
Okay, okay.
So that's going to add a lot of time potentially to digest all that. We don't even have a design yet, okay? The at-grade crossing is the simplest solution, and, you know, quite frankly, people are going to want to walk the shortest distance between point A and B, and that would be the shortest distance, so it does have that going for it. It's just a matter of between DOT and a traffic consultant and the equipment that's available to us if we can, if we can make that work. So it's going to take a little time. This only kind of came up last week as far as trying to change to that, once we heard that the cattle crossing wasn't going to work for them.
And this crossing, at this location, this crossing here are already at-grade crossings. All we would be doing is adding signalization to that.
Trying to make them safer.
Yeah.
So it is a benefit by, by doing that, absolutely.
And is that a, is that a pedestrian-controlled signalization where you'd press the button and it's going to, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're thinking something of possibly a cantilevered poststructure, or the yellow and red light or something, so as opposed to just flashing like we have here, we want it to be actually red.
And then again, maybe for large events, you turn those signals off and you're going to have traffic control people actually-
Well, we would use those, but they also offer for large events or even on the weekends to have traffic control people in addition to those lights, so.
Okay.
We're trying to work through all those details.
They're required by the permit for that.
But again, if it, if it doesn't get approved, it brings us back to that overhead crosswalk, which is, or them having to somehow build the-
Cattle crossing.
Cattle crossing.
Okay.
So, they can submit with the pedestrian, but just understand there's a lot of things we have to work through on that.
Okay.
I, you've got, there's enough detail here to understand the grading associated with what the cattle crossings intended to be. And what it would have to have is a sump pump for the drainage, anything that falls within there, that would have to get pumped to a drainage structure. The other portion of that is something that would be reviewed by the building department, correct?
Engineering and, yeah. And then, and then the other thing, I mean, hopefully we don't have to go to that, but the other concern again with that was doing that type of construction, if there's, if that road is open already to the public-
Correct.
That's a, that's a lot of construction going on there in a tight space. We'd have to close the road for a period of time, so.
I mean, I, I think the at-grade crossing, as long as we feel it can be signalized, true signalized, and it seems like the least invasive option and safe, because you're going to have a light there and it's going to be far enough out back from 52 that you should have cars be able to recognize that next signal.
So the other thing that we would do with that is we, we're incorporating a fence along this line here so that all the pedestrians are channelized to that pedestrian signalization. Right now, there's-
And you're going to have adequate sidewalks on both sides so that we don't have pedestrians walking in the roadway itself?
Correct. That way you don't have an individual walking here and then cutting across the access there.
So that's a, you understand our meetings and our timelines, I guess, you know, if you-
I understand them.
Soft copy.
Soft copy.
You mean electronic copies?
Electronic, yes. If we could, please.
Anybody else?
It's not that we don't enjoy paper, but there's some of us that can more easily work with it when it's electronic.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, is there any, not just me, is there anybody who wants more of those? Soft copy, as much, and it gets distributed faster.
There's definitely paper copies that you're going to need to have in the planning office because the public needs to be able to review anything you submit.
I just don't need as many, though.
But for us, we prefer the electronic copies that we can review. Okay. Scott, was there anything else you wanted to cover with the applicant tonight?
The only, just real briefly, the, what is, how do they refer to it? The community use agreement, we're still, I guess, trying to just finalize-
Finalizing that, yeah.
That was another condition under the term.
For, oh, I'm sorry, for the dome, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Got it, got it, okay.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you for providing the update. It sounds like you've made some, definitely some progress here, and the tweaks that you're making to the plan sound like they're making it a more usable site, which is nice to hear.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your understanding and your support.
Okay. And if we need to schedule one of those interim meetings, just maybe Scott, if we can just give us the heads up and we can put it on for the 17th, to schedule the-
Okay.
With regards to the cut-fill analysis, we're going to conduct that this week. We'll submit that on Monday or Tuesday. Can I submit that via email, or how do you, just, I know you, that's something you can get sooner so you can look into whether or not-
Just make, please make sure it goes to Pam-
Okay.
So that she has it for the planning office.
Okay, I can do a simple letter to that effect. All right. Thank you.
Pam, do we, I'm sorry, just with regard to if we, if we needed to schedule a May 1st meeting, would we need, we'd need to do that before April 17th? Do we need to make a motion at this meeting?
No, you can do it on April.
We can do it outside the meeting and then just as long as we advertise and schedule, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Copart site plan and special permit on Route 216. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Copart?
Good evening. My name's Richard O'Rourke, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean, as, serving as counsel to Copart. With me this evening is Tom Smith, is with Copart, property manager. Obviously, their offices are headquartered down in Dallas, Texas. Also, Jeff Contelmo is here, a professional engineer from Inside Engineering, along with Kathleen Snyder, a project landscape architect. Copart is contract vendee for the property, has the address of 416 Route 216, but everybody knows it as the flea market and the airport property. We, back in November and December, submitted our information to the board, and rightfully so, you have an application processing law, and unfortunately, the property owner had not paid the taxes, so we couldn't see you for a while, but Copart has stepped up to the plate and made an arrangement with the property owner, and we're, we're here tonight to discuss our project. This is a rather, shall we say, state-of-the-art kind of company. This is an online auction company. The, the assets are such that this is not something where a mass of people show up and there's an auction on site. In fact, there are no operations on a weekend, very little. During the week, it's, it's an eight-to-five operation for the most part. The organization works very closely with FEMA, with first responders, played an instrumental role after Hurricane Sandy. And so the company is one that I think you have to understand what, what, what the process is. This is, is not, and I've heard when we met with some officials, the first question is, well, this is a junkyard. It is not. And it is not because there's no stacking, there's no crushing, there's no dismantling, there's no selling of parts. The, the vehicles are there for a period of 50 or 60 days, they are sold, they are picked up, the sales occur through the internet. Obviously, we recognize that the, the process is one that is foreign to, to this particular area, and one that I think we would like to explain to you what Copart's about. Jeff can talk a little bit about the site, and as far as the use is concerned, we'd like to speak to you about that as well. So with that, if we could do that.
Just a couple of questions right off.
Sure.
You talked about the 50 to 60 days. Is there like some kind of a drop-dead date, like after 120 days that stuff gets moved, or is there like gradual residual?
Yeah. You know, that's a, that's a good question, I'm sure Mr. Smith can answer it. Maybe, maybe that question and many others will be answered once we go through the whole thing.
So Jeff's going to walk us through the business operations as well?
Yeah, and he'll, he'll be touching on it. This, this is the information that, that Tom will be addressing, so.
I didn't mean to cut you off. Thanks.
I didn't mean to cut you off. We want to answer your question, believe me. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
My name's Tom Smith, I'm with Copart, I'm a property manager. I'd like to thank you for your time and your service to the community tonight. I've been with Copart for about 23 years, and I've traveled extensively through New England, northern Midwest, into St. Louis, through, through the Carolinas and every state in between. I've been to many town halls, and I just want to compliment you on your decor. Appreciate the honor and your local heroes. I've never seen anything like that, so it's, just want to say thanks. I wanted to start basically with reading our statement of operations, because perhaps some of the questions that you might have will be answered in that statement of operations, and it may spark some other questions that you may have. Copart Inc. and its subsidiaries provide cutting-edge asset liquidation services to institutional, commercial, and private owners of used, undamaged, or damaged vehicles, trailers, watercraft, and powersports, industrial and commercial equipment, collectively assets. Most of our sellers are insurance companies, licensed dealers, financial institutions, charities, municipalities, and fleet operators. Copart Asset Service includes short-term storage and sale of assets and ancillary receiving, shipping, lien sale, and administrative services. All assets are liquidated intact, meaning no dismantling, draining of fluids, crushing, or sale of parts occurs at Copart facilities. A typical facility will consist of an office building, customer parking, shipping and receiving area, short-term storage. After being received at a facility, assets are inspected, photographed, cataloged, excuse me, and placed in ground level, short-term storage designed for quick retrieval. Assets are never stacked and remain in short-term storage for an average of only 50 or 60 days. After being placed in short-term storage, assets are listed for sale through Copart's proprietary online auction-style website, mobile apps, and mobile apps for purchase only by Copart-registered members. Members are primarily licensed dealers, dis mailers, rebuilders, and exporters, and in some cases, end users. All offers, excuse me, all offers are submitted and accepted electronically without the use of a live auctioneer. Members are provided the opportunity to inspect assets at a facility, although most asset inspections are limited to viewing images and information made available online. Members may electronically submit preliminary offers from anywhere in the world via personal computers, mobile devices with internet access, or a limited number of computer kiosks located at our facilities. The high preliminary offer is carried over to the online virtual sale during which members may submit offers electronically only from a remote online device. Assets are sold to the member with the highest offer, who then arranges for pickup and transportation their assets from a facility. Payments for sold assets may be made electronically via wire transfer or in person at the facility. Titles to sold assets are either picked up by the buyer along with sold assets or mailed to Copart, mailed by Copart to the buyer. That's a lot of, lot of words, but I think it speaks to some of the concerns of the facilities. We do deal with, my primary line of business is insurance company total loss vehicles. That can be anything from a theft, fire, collision, you know, you guys maybe remember Hurricane Sandy? I just had a, about an eight-week deployment in Houston from Hurricane Harvey. So we do process vehicles from catastrophes as well. So the primary driver, the primary source of our inventory is, is insurance company With the, you know, I, I've been here 23 years, I'm a dinosaur. I have never bought anything online and it scares me. When we moved from the live sale to the internet model, our business really took off and it began to grow, and it began, excuse me, it, it gave buyers of our inventory the ability to bid basically anywhere, any of our facilities in the country, and now we are international as well. So it, it helped us out otherwise as well, because we don't draw 300, 400 people to a facility for a live auction. You don't hear auction trucks or loudspeaker systems announcing, there's no ringman yelling, hip, hip, you know, I don't know if you've ever been to a live auction, but it, it happens very quietly. We've got close to 200 facilities in the States, and, you know, with that number and only five days a week, you've got potentially 35, 40, 45 sales going on every day, and there's no, there's no noise associated with it. So, you know, the, the basic business model is based on those insurance company total loss vehicles, but the computer doesn't really know what it's selling, so we have the tool to market to lending institutions, to used car franchise dealers, to municipalities, various large fleet situations, Verizon, Bell Atlantic, anybody that has end-of-life fleet stuff that they want to get rid of. So we're not the, we're not the largest auction company as far as what we would call whole cars, drivable cars, that would be your Manhams, your Dessas, but Copart is, we feel, the premier company for remarketing insurance company vehicles and a lot of what you see there, the rental car companies, municipal fleets, charities, et cetera. Just a brief, trade me, switch me one slide, please? Maybe it's the other way. Back one more, yeah. Just a little bit of history about the company, founded in 1982 by Willis Johnson. Willis was a Vietnam vet, came home from Vietnam, and he's really a true American success story. Worked at a Safeco for probably six, eight months. Worked at a Safeco for probably six, eight months. Excuse me, went to community college for a couple of semesters, and got into business for himself, and basically built his company up by his bootstraps. And in 1994, the company went public. We are publicly traded on the NASDAQ, our symbol is C P R T. You can see, since I, excuse me, since I started working, we had 40 locations in the United States, we're just completing number 41. And in my time here, we've gone to Canada, United Kingdom, Ireland, India, Brazil, Germany, UAE, Oman, Bahrain, and Spain. Germany is, oh, Germany's on there. And we sell, you see the searches there, we sell in 200 locations worldwide. So, without, I wanted to just read the statement of operations, give you a brief overview, and I think Jeff wanted to speak a little bit to the site plan. I'll answer questions, I'll address whatever concerns that I may, but I didn't want to interrupt. If you want to give Jeff a chance to speak to the site plan, or if...
Before you do that, if you could, just, I understand what you read to us. I've read it, I think it was in your application package. What I don't see here, or what I just didn't maybe glean from your application package was, are you, when you say you're having 30 to 40 auctions a day, or 30 to 40 auctions going on at any given time, are you selling cars one by one, or are you selling like lots of groups of cars? What does that look like exactly? So when you say people enter bids, and the lowest, highest bid is carried over to an online auction? Just walk me through what that looks like, if you don't mind.
A typical facility such as this one, you know, is gonna pick up inventory throughout the week, 30, 40 cars a day. That inventory is gonna build up. During the time that it's building up, we're taking the title work, whether there's a bank lien, or whether, if the owner has the title, if the bank has the title, insurance company has the title, we're gonna process title work and get a salvage certificate, generally, from the state. As soon as we have that certificate, we put it in the next available sale. Typically, the sales at an individual facility will occur weekly. So, when I said, and we are selling individual cars, one at a time. That's not, you know, nobody's bidding on 50 or 60 at a time. The website is fairly unique, the technology is fairly unique, because it is a live auction, where, as each unit comes up for sale, you will see, and I get lost on that website, it's fun to watch, but you will see where each buyer is registering from. So, you know, 98 Ford Taurus may have six people bidding on it actively, and the computer prompts you, when bidding slows down, you get a computerized voice on your laptop that says, "Going once, going twice." If somebody jumps in and bids again, it registers that bid, and it starts over again. We do have a similar function to, might be like an eBay where you can buy it here, kind of deal. But the vehicle that really makes it successful is that live component. Not very many websites have that live auction component to them. So it's each individual sale. So, if you think in terms of picking up 50 cars a day, and you're gonna have a sale weekly, in order to kind of keep your inventory even, you're gonna sell 250, 300 cars a week. Title work comes back from the state, and you like to try to sell at least what you're bringing in. So that, when that sale happens, 250, 300 units, whatever it may be, it rolls through, it's usually minutes for a car to sell, maybe even less than that. So it may take a couple of hours to go through wholesale.
Can I just ask, are these reserve auctions, or no reserve auctions?
When you say reserve, you mean put a minimum bid on?
Is there a minimum set by?
Well, that would depend on who the seller is. Sometimes they put reserves, sometimes they don't.
Also, you don't have control, that's whoever to sell it might put it in.
Yeah, we don't take ownership of the vehicles, we're selling them at their direction. So depending on what type of contract we may have with the particular customer, they'll kind of dictate to us what they want to do with that.
Just to Mike's point, if there's an unrealistic minimum bid, that it could lead to a car sitting around for a while.
Well, and to that, everything sells. And there are times when people put unrealistic expectations on what something's worth. And they will generally see within a matter, and we can enter in the next available sale. So, in a matter of two or three weeks, you'll start seeing a trend. If you're trending down, they'll probably let it go. If you're trending up, then they might say, "Well, run it one more time," that kind of deal. So, those decisions are not up to us, we very seldom make those. There are customers that just, and the lion's share of the cars, go.
Do you reach a point where, if they're just not realistic, you say, "Take your car back"?
Our general managers watch those auctions very carefully, and we also have, because we sell so many cars, we've been doing this almost 30 years, and with the advent, not advent, with, as the computers take a bigger role, it's easier to keep data on that. So we can predict pretty well whether someone's expectations are real or not. And that's where our general managers get involved, and, you know, this isn't, this isn't happening. A 98 Ford Taurus isn't gonna get you $5,000, I'm sorry. Be lucky to get 500.
Tom, are these, these are the, it says servicing these organization types, are these the members? I mean, are these groups trading cars amongst themselves, or are there members that are...
Oh, no, no, no.
And that these are the sources of the cars?
The sources of the cars would be your insurance companies, dealerships, charities, et cetera. The buyers are generally rebuilt, and, what am I...
Okay, so, like the members, are there any, like, individual members?
Members are people who can bid, right?
Members are, you know...
People who can bid?
Yeah, we, depending on what your state requirements would be, would kind of dictate what we can do with our membership. And I don't particularly know what the rules are in New York, but certain states, I know one, for example, North Carolina, the public can buy salvage. You could actually come in and buy salvage. But you have to register, you have to be a registered Copart buyer. You can't just walk off the street. So, you can register online, but typically, the lion's share of these vehicles are gonna go to your auto wreckers, you know, the junkyards, were the source of a lot of their inventory.
That just raised a question to me. Suppose somebody comes in and bids, you know, $8,000 on a Lincoln Continental, and you accept, you accept a bid, the thing's been banged up a little bit, and the guy comes, and what he decides is all he wants is the bumper. What do you do?
He's taking the whole car. Yeah, we're not doing any partying.
Because you will not allow him to dismantle?
No, 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 no.
Which brings me to my next question, is, a beautiful lead-in, is, what's the average unit sale size? Is it really individual cars going, so, because this is gonna play to a key point that I think is gonna be part of the public's discussion, and that is, the size of the trucks coming in and off. And that's not a reflection on this use, but it's more a reflection on the roads leading in there. I'm sure you guys have taken a look at that and said...
Yeah, I was gonna say, depending on the route that they take, from 52 to 216, that could be really ugly. Going through the Village of Stormville, you're gonna have a lot of upset people. But if you go down 52 and try and make the right on the 216, that way, it's an impossible turn for a large truck to make, so I really don't know how you're gonna get there. And then navigate the couple of bad turns on 216, you know, thinking in particular Phillips Road, down by Brothers Road, if there's big trucks going through there, that's gonna be a problem.
Let's make sure we bring that up when Jeff's presenting for the site plan itself, because I agree with you, I think there's probably traffic concerns we need to sort of outline for you, and then see where you're going with it. But could we just come back to my question, which was, what does this look like? So, so far, what I've learned from you is that you're gonna buy cars during the week, you're gonna, they're gonna come into your site, sorry, they're gonna come into your site for auction, you're gonna try to get the salvage title, that's gonna take some period of time. As soon as you have the salvage title, you're scheduling them for some type of auction. Where does the description here come in, where you allow people to make pre-bids before the auction happens? How does that part work? Because you make a reference here to having customers coming into kiosks at your site.
So if, and it's very infrequent, but we have two or three different kiosks that we'll put for, there are gentlemen like myself that don't want to buy something on a phone app, and I don't want to say that everybody that buys from us is a man either, but there are people that simply don't want to do this from their office computer. They may come into our facility and sit down at one of our terminals and just enter their, they're essentially entering a maximum bid, at that point. They're not actively bidding.
They're not actually there for the live auction, they're there before a live auction.
No, they're coming in, and they're entering in what they would call their maximum bid.
Okay, so how much time before the actual auction happens, and the ability to enter these bids that you're talking about? What is the timeline for that? I'm trying to understand, you're saying 50 to 60 days for a car, I'm just trying to understand what that looks like.
When you get the title work back from the state, it gets entered into our computer system, and the sales are gonna happen weekly. And let's just say it's on Wednesday. When they enter that car into the sale, they may not want to put it into that very first sale. So you get the title work back on a Tuesday, you don't want to put it in Wednesday's sale, because nobody will really have a chance to view it. So you may enter that in the following week or the week after. So you're gonna have about a one- or two-week timeframe there, where, when you go onto our website, you're gonna be able to look at the next, the very next sale, and a couple of...
Upcoming.
Upcoming, yes. And those are those opportunities where you can go in before that sale happens and place that bid.
Are you allowing those consumers to walk your site, or do they have to just look at a computer screen?
We have found, yes, they can come in and view inventory.
You meaning walk your site?
Well, they're gonna walk the site in a designated area that has sales cars in it, they're not gonna walk the entire property.
But that's what I mean, but they can come and physically look at the car, you're not just letting them come in and work at a terminal, you're gonna allow them to exit if they want to see it?
No, they can go look at a car, if they want to, yeah, we'll generally escort them out and let them view that. But what we're seeing, and what the trend is, is, this, you know, the business is so sophisticated, and it really is a testament to what, you know, the computers allow you to do. These guys that buy this inventory, they know what they're gonna pay for a car, and they really look at the pictures and just buy. I never thought it would happen, and when one of our executives says, "Hey, you know, we're toying around with this Internet thing, and we got this little website," you remember when everybody's website first came out, they were just a page, they didn't do anything, you couldn't click on anything? Ah, it'll never work. People will, I want to touch things that I buy, I want to feel them, I want a tire kicker. I never thought that the industry would get to the point where people are just looking at pictures, and I'll take it.
Okay, all right, so now let's say that we've had the one or two weeks where you've collected pre-bids, so you've established either a minimum value from the seller, or from the minimum highest bid that you received. It goes into the auction, what's the timeline from the point where that auction ends and the car is sold?
Couple of hours.
What does that look like?
Couple of hours. I mean, from, say this one more time?
So, I'm trying to understand, the car enters your site, and the car leaves your site. So after the auction, the car is sold, how much time are you giving purchasers to remove the cars?
From the time it's sold, I believe buyers have three days to pick that car up, before we would institute a storage policy. And you have, you know, we allow folks to have a grace period to get there and pick it up, because they have to arrange transport on a truck.
But if it's drivable, you're not letting them drive it, they must, or their salvage title, so they...
Well, if they come in and it's drivable, and they can slip a dealer plate on it, and they want to drive it out, they're certainly allowed to.
Even with the salvage title, they can do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Wait, you fill it back up with fluids, though? I thought the fluids were drained, when they come on site.
Well, if the car's drivable, it's probably not, it's probably not been in too bad of an accident, we're not filling anything up with fluids.
Okay.
Some of your natural disasters, you may just have, they may just have been wet, or something like that, you mean, you mentioned the hurricane, it's not necessarily their damage, for you.
You know, some of the variety, the spectrum is very large on what you, what an insurance company will total. And if a car sits in a dealership, and water comes up to the rocker panels, the car is probably not damaged too bad, but they're not gonna sell it for new. That doesn't mean you can't drive it off of the lot. But to speak to your point, after the sale, you have, I think it's three days free of storage. And the reason that we institute a storage policy after that is, guys in this, I'm sorry, in the car business, you know, they move these cars, they may be buying it to resell it, and if they don't have a buyer, they'll let it sit at our place, and if we don't incentivize them to get it out, they'll use us for their storage lot. So we have to, we have to put...
But you've built that in, you have fees or whatever, you charge them, if they don't pick it up in a certain amount of time?
Yes. And then, you know, sometimes there are instances where people, and we don't like to do this, because you don't want people to say they're gonna buy it. When it's sold via our computer system, a check gets cut, and it goes to the seller. We do that. If we don't collect on the other side, we're left holding the bag. So we don't like to let people out of the sale, but certainly, if there's extenuating circumstance, they get out of the sale, they don't come and pick it up, then we put it, you know, it sells in the next sale.
Okay, okay.
That 50 or 60 days is, and you'd asked the question, there are certain cases where vehicles get abandoned, and they get in litigation. There are a very small percentage of those. Cars are not gonna sit on our facility until there's a tree growing up through them, or anything of that nature.
Okay, okay. And then, is this, the facility you're proposing here, is this comparable to the average-sized facilities you have in other locations, or is it smaller, larger?
It's on the, probably the upper third of the spectrum. If you were gonna divide everything into threes, this would probably be on the larger third of the spectrum. This is comparable to the size of the facility that we have in Brookhaven, smaller than Albany, smaller than, and, you know, just to speak to what facilities we have in the state of New York, we have one in Brookhaven, Long Island, we have one in the Town of Colony, off of, is it US 5, or 5 or 15, or something, it runs from Albany to Schenectady. We have one in Brewherton, which is north of Syracuse, we have one in Leroy, and, I feel like I'm forgetting one.
Newburgh?
Newburgh, yeah. That would be, that's all of them in New York.
Okay. What's it compared to this one in Newburgh, because that's the one that we've seen?
This one's about, probably, two and a half, three times the physical footprint.
Is it the same nature in Newburgh?
I'm sorry.
Same model?
Yeah.
Just bringing them in, selling them, not dismantling or anything?
Could I just ask, do they come in in bulk, I mean, multiple cars in a carrier? And how do they leave the site, individually, or bulk?
Most of the, most, from our standpoint, in order for us to be efficient, we have to try to bring them in, in groups, so, and to haul, most of these cars, they have to be on a flatbed, or they have to be on a hook. So we're gonna want to do that on a two-car, or four-car, to try to get some economies out of the towing service. And when they leave, it's the same thing, the guys don't want to pay, if a guy buys four or five cars, he doesn't want to pay four or five different tow companies, wants to try to find...
Would that be the average, that most of your members buy multiple vehicles on the auctions, or...
Yeah, and most of them have their own vehicles, and they may have a two-car, they may have their own four-car to come pick up their own inventory. We do get some trucks that, you know, they'll subhaul for other folks. But it's generally not, you know, if you're gonna get 50 cars in a day, or 40 cars in a day, you're not gonna see 50 individual trucks coming in, usually in groups of two and four.
This was helpful, thank you for walking us through that.
Well, thank you.
I have another question, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Scott, the international sales, so, you know, like a quarter of them are going overseas, is that like one standard point that you're heading to? Like, we can expect traffic between here and, like, Bayonne, or one of the places, you know, a port?
Let me just have you come back to the mic, I'm sorry, we record the meetings.
You know, that's a little bit above my pay grade. I'm not, you have so many locations on the East Coast here with ports, and I'm from Pittsburgh, and we don't have ports.
Okay, so it's not like, you know, 25, so we're gonna be following the same route?
No, no.
Thank you.
Scott, and your Newburgh facility is gonna stay operational? You're not...
No, I don't, we're gonna, what, what, what will more than likely happen to kickstart this facility, it would probably take 40 or 50% of the business that's going on in Newburgh, and probably, certainly, everything... Newburgh and probably certainly everything that's happening east of the Hudson River. And then in, what would I call that, Western Connecticut, because our next facility from Newburgh going that way is in Hartford. So we've got this area here where we're trying to put that spot on the map to, to take some relief off of Hartford and relief off of Newburgh.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Cantelmo from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Kathleen Snyder's over there working the computer, she's our project landscape architect. And we've, we've prepared and submitted a concept plan and we realize that it's fairly basic, but we want to give the flavor of how Copart's proposal here would fit onto the Stormville Airport property. And I know that the board is fairly familiar with the property and its history and what's been happening there for the last couple decades anyway, in terms of flea markets and shows. The proposal, as I said, is fairly basic. The, the active part of the facility, which is shown up on 216, is comprised of a 14,400 square foot building, which would be the building where 30-plus employees would be sighted. That would include the office people, the processing of, of the photographs and online registry of the cars, as well as customer service. In, in front of that is a 90-car parking lot, which would be similar to any parking lot for a commercial facility. It would have pertinent landscaping around it, it would have lighting for those times of the years that we leave work and it's dark outside. And it would be a new entry drive established off of New York State Route 216. The other driveways, I think there's a half a dozen driveways now, would be eliminated. We may want to add one back in based on comments we got from the Fire Advisory Board. But that would be a single point of entry for the employees and any of the customers. Off to the west of the building, parking area is what they call the bullpen or pickup drop-off area, and that's exactly what it's for. It's for the area where someone would either drop off an asset or a vehicle or pick one up. So that's really what's considered to be the active or commercial portion of the property. The remainder of the property really is a entirely fenced-in, secure area without any lighting, with security cameras, with a gravel surface where the assets or vehicles would be stored. Kat, Kathleen, if we could-
So, I'm sorry, I thought you said you have, give or take 350 cars on site. You're going to fence in the entire property?
Well, we're going to fence in the portion of the property that would be, that would be for storage and-
What you just outlined as you were talking-
Correct, Kathleen was going around, yeah.
Looks like everything outside the wetland buffer.
Well, it's primarily what's, what's already disturbed and/or developed. And we actually have, could you go to the next image, please? So, so this is an aerial photo, which kind of keys in the fenced area and the limits of the storage. And as you can see, the areas which have been cleared are in active use, either by the flea market, airport, or past agricultural, I would say, activities. And what we've done-
But that's a much larger area than what would be indicated by the size of facility you described.
And the car counts.
In your application.
Yeah, I think, I think Tom can, can clarify that.
It's not all going to be covered with cars.
It could.
Wow.
Okay.
Do you want Tom to talk to that?
If you don't mind, could you just answer that question? Because it sounds different than what you described, I'm sorry Jeff, I don't mean to interrupt you.
I didn't mean to say that there would only be 350 cars. I'm just giving you a typical example. If you're picking up 50 cars a day, you're going to end up with 250 cars at the end of the week. Okay, so now you have that time lag in there where it takes you 50 to 60 days to move that car out, your inventory continues to build.
And even if I multiply that by 10 weeks, that's still only 2,500 cars. You're fencing in about 100 acres.
Well, it's more like 75.
Okay, you're fencing in 75 acres.
And the, the one element that we expect this facility to do is support us in, and I, I just wrote on my piece of paper that I forgot to mention this.
Okay.
To support us in our catastrophe response.
In your, oh, catastrophe response, okay, sorry, got it.
So, we, we do not expect to move in and fill that site up completely with cars. We expect there to build an inventory, and what that is, it may be 40 acres, it may be 50 acres. We expect there to be extra space available that we want to develop because what we're finding out is we're having these catastrophes in different areas every five or six or seven years. And we're, and we've been not equipped to handle the increased storage. And for an example, in Houston, we ended up leasing a couple of hundred acres to process the salvage that came out of that storm. We didn't have it. So we're going out, we rented some, an NHRA drag strip that had 150-acre parking lot, and we put flood cars on it. Part of the, part of our business is when the insurance companies call, you can't say no. So we have to be able to handle that. I have been involved in Katrina, I've been involved in Sandy, Harvey, Irma, Matthew, and I used to have hair and it wasn't gray. We have been, over the years, refining what we do in our response to these catastrophes and trying to build a little bit of capacity into our system. And this is, this plays into that model a little bit. Okeechobee, Florida, we bought a property because it was available and because it helps us out strategically in Florida. In Houston, we bought 250 acres enclosed on it about two weeks before Harvey hit. So it was 250 acres of undeveloped land sitting there. It was absolutely useless to us for that storm, but we do anticipate, you know, a need, as, as, you know, we see these storms just every five, six, seven years, us needing the capacity. So part of that's factored into this facility. But we would intend to fence the entire property, develop it into a gravel storage lot. And honestly, I would say, you know, anticipate half of it within two or three years, it would be full. And then the balance of the property available for cat response.
And if full, estimated the number of cars on site?
For half of it, or?
Then it's full.
We store, I think about 135, 140 cars an acre. So it, whatever that is, times the maximum capacity would-
100 would be 4,000 on 40 acres. So it seems like either they're there for more than 50 to 60 days, or you're processing more than 250 a week on average.
A week. Well, I, what I'm being told is that the, right now Marlboro processes 100 cars a day and this is going to take half of their inventory. So I'm saying 50 cars a day. That's going to give us the ability to-
That's before you ramp up and, and have its own business generated?
Well, we expect it, well, you, you have some organic growth just because of population increases, but we would also have the ability to, to get additional business. But I don't, I don't anticipate this growing into a 100-acre facility in, you know, two, three years.
Okay.
Given that this is, these cars are all in a, in a database, is there any way to run quick algorithm that says, here's, you know, just take like the Hartford and the Newburgh and say, here's what the bell curve looks like in terms of the number of days those cars have been on site? It's got to be in the system, right? It's all computerized.
Make a calculation.
I, I can't answer that. I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure we can get that available for you if that's what you need.
Well, I get the feeling, you know, we want to know, and I, and I think when we have a public hearing, I think people are going to want to know that and-
The, you know, the interest-
Well, I mean, you're stating that, you're stating that the cars don't stay there for very long, that even if they've been in an accident, they're not leaking. The longer a car stays on your lot, the higher the chance that something's going to degrade or give way or whatever. So-
Sure.
The numbers you're giving us and the acreage you're setting aside here aren't matching up yet. So we just need to understand that a little better. Are you going to be processing more per day, ramp it up over time? Just, just, and you don't have to do it right now, but just-
Sure.
We need the explanation of that. What's the maximum capacity? How do you expect to use that maximum capacity? What's that going to look like? It's also going to lead into, Ed, what you were saying with the traffic and routes and things like that. What we can expect to see is increased truck traffic and, you know, vehicle traffic on, on the roads.
Okay.
And that's just maybe better to come back to us with that than, than kind of estimate.
And by the way, you know, first of all, welcome, it's always great to have new businesses coming into town, but, you know, we're trying to give you the, the worst-case scenario right upfront.
Right, right.
Here you go, you know, just so.
Now, I, I made the call in the parking lot of the hotel that I was staying in to try to get a handle on what, what the volume's going to be here because the, the facility is large and, and we want to develop the whole property. And, and we, and I was told that the intent is to have this fudge factor, if you will, built into our system so that we have capacity for storms. But however, it will function primarily initially based off of about 50% of the inventory that's happening in Marlboro.
So what we would want to understand is the expected averages daily, not for the catastrophic event, but for just when it's up and running the way you think it will. We understand there's going to be a ramp-up time, so don't tell us what it's going to look like in the first month. But let's say five years in, what does your average eight-week time period look like?
Sure.
How many cars are coming in? Presumably the same number of cars are leaving because you have a 50 to 60-day window. It just, just-
Yes.
If we can understand that, that just helps us again with traffic estimates and things like that a little bit better. We get what you're saying, you're going to do two, two or four, two to four at a time, that sort of thing. It just, we need to be able to estimate those things.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions for the gentleman. The parking, and maybe Jeff, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but I think, how many employees again?
30.
30. And I think there's something like 92 parking spaces?
Well, that's what made me, that's what made me write the note over here, that that's taken into account that we're going to need some extra parking in the event of a catastrophe.
No, I'm talking about employee parking spaces.
Yeah, so-
Bring more staff on, is that the idea?
When, yeah, because you're going to have an increase in volume. We have cat teams. I mean, we have-
Yeah, but I, I don't know if we want to have an impervious paved parking lot just because you need it every five years. I mean, there might be other ways to address that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet, but yeah, I agree with you.
I guess my question is it for-
Probably all have the same question, 90 parking spaces for 40 employees, didn't-
Is it strictly for employees, or when you do have auctions, do you go around like the old way where a group of 20 people would follow the auctioneer around from car to car, and that's why you need the additional parking spaces for those, for those?
No, that's not happening. The, the sales are on the, on the internet.
Strictly on the internet?
Yeah.
There's no walking around inside the, the phone and-
No, 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 no. And then, in addition to employees during those times, you have insurance company representatives, adjusters that'll come to the sales. So to have a little bit of an oversized parking lot, we feel is necessary.
A little bit's like double or more, but that's why I asked the question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, I'm sorry to take that detour.
No problem.
It just helps, it just helps us help frame what we're going to look for from you for some of the site plans.
Warming up the audience.
No problem. Yeah, Tom pointed out that there's employees that park there, there's some customer parking set aside there and some client parking, which as he said, are their clients on the other end. But we can get, we can clarify what the steady-state number is and understand what the overflow is, and that, that's a good idea looking forward. Just to continue on the site itself, it's 151-acre site, and as Tom said, the fenced-in area there represents, I think in round numbers, 80 acres. So, and as you can see, what we've attempted to do is stay out of the wetland buffer certainly, and work in most cases within the areas that have already been disturbed. We have allocated significant area for stormwater management with six stormwater basins sighted in the, the areas where the main portion of the property would drain to. And we have provided just some preliminary ideas and some screening that may take place along the frontage on 216. In addition to the conceptual site plan that we submitted, we did submit a fully AF just based on some of the preliminary information that will have to be advanced with some further detail.
I was going to say, you had a few things you noted though that weren't submitted yet.
Correct, right, because at the early stage. But we did want to at least get that document in your hand to give the breadth of, of information that we did have in hand. In addition, and in support of that EAF, we submitted a preliminary traffic report that was prepared by one of our team members, Kimberly Horn, who actually took some counts at the Brookhaven facility, which is actually slightly larger than this one if I remember correctly, and actually took some counts and gave some statistics in terms of what the anticipated traffic would be and breakdown of cars versus trucks versus even tractor-trailer car carriers. And again, we're going to get into that a bunch more.
Not just employees, that was deliveries.
Correct.
Well, because I was, I thought one of the numbers of arrivals was 37, which kind of smells like the employee base.
Yeah, again, they, they were working during some very specific timeframes with peaking and that very well could be, Kimberly Horn couldn't be here tonight, but the idea by having them engaged in on the team is that they can work with your traffic consultant and answer the questions relative to traffic. I, I'm, I kind of play traffic engineer on TV, but I'm not really one, so.
No, that's fair. And I apologize, I'm, I'm just looking at it. I didn't get a chance to read through the traffic report in detail, but if it's not in here, one of the things that would be very helpful to us is to understand the difference in the two facilities. So give us a, like the size of the office, the number of employees, the number of cars, so that we can compare it to what we have here.
Understood, sure.
It just will help us relate it. And you may, it may already be in here, I didn't get a chance to read through this in detail yet.
Are there any other questions on the site? If not, I'm going to hand it over to Rick.
Did you want to talk more about the actual paths? You were bringing up the routes in and-
Yeah, that was, that was certainly, you know, in your thing here, it says you're going to take Wellingtonville Road down Stormville Mountain on 52, and then I'm unclear as to how you're going to get to 216 from there.
Yeah, the, the distribution will be discussed in more detail by the traffic engineer. I mean, I travel that route, and I think you said it earlier, if someone is coming from the east and gets off at Exit 17, the route would be 52 to Old Route 52 to 216.
Yeah, that takes you right through Stormville.
Right.
Depending on the number of trucks and how big they are and how noisy there are, that could certainly be some concerns that might need to be addressed.
52 is a town road.
And that's a small, yeah, I was going to say that's not a-
Yeah, it's a small road.
Coming from the west would mean basically you'd have to get off at Limekill.
Right.
If you came, if you came from, from, I'm going to say the south, the southwest or west, yes. You know, also, the traffic report also talks about Route 55 and coming in from Route 55 on 216. So again, you know, the draft, traffic distribution can be refined within that study, which is, which is a normal course of action and discuss that some more.
The other, the other problem with either one of those routes from either direction is the, the bad turns on 216, you know, either between 52 and the, and the airport or going Old 52 and going up there, there's some bad, or even from 55, out by Depot Hill, there's still very bad turns that there, you know, people take too fast now. So, you know, if you've got any good-sized truck, that's going to be a problem.
We, again, we'll, we'll address, we'll address those routes.
I would, I would echo what you're saying. I think typically with your traffic analysis, you, you tend to give us, you know, peak hours. And I, and I understand why you do that, assessing for traffic lights and things like that. But I, I think just understanding total per day in and out is going to be important for this project as well.
Yeah, the, the traffic counts-
Even if they're coming in the hours. And I'd also like to know whether you're running a 24-hour operation or whether you're running during normal, normal business hours, that sort of thing. Because again, trucks can be a little bit noisy. You've got, the routes you're describing are very close to residential areas in the town.
The, the counts do take into account daily traffic and peak traffic typically, and the numbers that are in our report do talk about that. I think Tom, Tom made it clear.
And again, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to read through yet.
No problem. And we'll, we'll refine everything and we'll talk about it in much more detail, I'm sure. But I just want to hit a couple high points, and they are that number one, yes, daily traffic numbers are in there. Number two, Tom stated that the, the hours of operation for Copart are a normal business day, 8 to 5 o'clock. There are no off-hours activities that take place except during a catastrophe. There are no off-hours activities that take place except during a catastrophe and they do have that exception stated.
And that's fair.
And then about the, the road geometry, I mean, I'm very familiar with the road geometry. I know that the state, the state controls much of, of the network we've talked about. We also know that trucks travel those routes right now. As Tom indicated, the trucks, he's talked about the ones and twos are not tractor-trailers, but, you know, flatbed trucks that aren't the biggest trucks that travel those routes. But we certainly will take a look at them in the context of existing conditions and the current or planned improvements that may take place. And I'll leave that to Kim Lee Horn, that's what, they're on our team.
I do think the one message that probably you should tell them is, oh, I think Old Route 52 would be off the table as a town road, residential road. I think that one's off the table, so whatever you study, you got to omit that.
Since you're familiar with the geometry, you know it's a sine wave. Which, which is a sine wave? The, the route of the road? Yeah, I know. It's a little more arbitrary than a sine wave.
Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff, stay with us for one more minute. So I just want to make sure that you know, if you haven't received copies, you will shortly. We have fire advisory board, conservation advisory council notes. Michelle has, has provided a memo as has Morris.
We have not gotten either of those.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll make sure you get all of our initial comments.
We did get Dutchess County planning also.
She's got, she's got my-
Oh, okay. I couldn't tell what you were pointing at. And, and yes, our Dutchess County, our Dutchess County did respond and say they needed more information, but they also expressed some initial concerns and considerations. So just-
Understood.
I want to make sure you have all of those things as you're looking to build out the plan a little more fully.
Thank you, we do. The only one we don't have is the Morris one that you mentioned.
Okay, we'll make sure that you get copies of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, I think you have a, a feeling for what the use is and I think the one thing that, that's so important and, and everything that's been said about truck traffic is absolutely true, but when I look at your zoning ordinance, I look at your, your uses in this particular zone, what we're looking at is a lot of truck traffic in terms of whether it has to do with manufacturing or it has to do with cold storage plants, creameries, ice cream factories, bottling works, baking plants, food and drink distribution plants. We're talking about major truck traffic and that is just one of many of the uses that are permitted in this particular zone. So whatever the issue is in terms of truck traffic, it's something that I think that the board's going to have the same questions, whether it was dish use or one of those other uses, it's the same.
As long as you realize we're asking appropriate questions.
You're asking very appropriate questions, absolutely. And, but I, I think the key point here and where we are, as I mentioned up front, there is not a full application, we know that. We submitted essentially a concept plan, tried to give you enough information so that you got a sense of what this is about. We're contract vendors. One of the, one of the threshold issues here is whether we are a use that is permissible within, within the zone. If you, if you read what I wrote to you in that regard, and it's something that we looked at very, very carefully, one of the uses that is permitted in this particular zone reads as follows, and again, with the overlay of the truck traffic and everything else we've talked about, it says, "Any use of the same general character as a listed permitted use, provided that the board shall find that said use is not inconsistent with the generally accepted definition term of light industry," and that gets us into that whole issue of the trucking and everything else, "and where in the estimation of the board, the enterprise in question will be beneficial to the town as a whole." You don't need to know about tax ratables. You, we know how much the taxes are without this property being developed, so, which we paid to get here, just to, just to get here by way of the application. If we improve this property, I have a feeling that our tax ratable will go up. Put that aside for the moment. When we take a look at uses that are consistent, and this is a 21st century company, so it's not contemplated in your use table per se, however, when I take a look at the uses that you have and we take into consideration the truck traffic and the other kinds of things that are, that are permissible within the zone, we're not that far off. And then when you take a look at some of the more particular uses, quite frankly, I think they're very analogous. And a perfect illustration is, is the, the use that is permitted in this zone, which includes contractor equipment storage yards, building materials sales yards, and lumber yards. Merchandise in, merchandise out. Big trucks in, big trucks out. We have small trucks in, small trucks out. So I guess, you know, my, my, my initial threshold inclination, and we would be delighted to furnish all of that information, but by virtue of what it says in terms of what the board makes a determination that is our use consistent with some of those others, I would respectfully argue that it is, particularly when you take a look at your uses that are permitted, you take a look at the characteristics of those uses and you take a look at contractors' yards or lumber yards or things of that nature. You have fungible materials coming in, fungible materials going out. We have probably less traffic than many of the other uses that are permissible in this zone. So again, I guess that's our position and frankly and respectfully, we've got to get a sense of, should we go forward with this or should we not? And that's an issue that I oppose to the board. I'm sure you're going to want to speak with counsel and your consultants about it, but I, I need to know because otherwise, you know-
So I'll say a few-
We're off to a, we're off to an odyssey and I've been, I had, I did not have gray hair when I started doing this 30 years ago, so.
So I'll say a few things. I understand the area of the code that you're referencing where it says other similar uses. The examples that you provided, things like lumber yards, I'm not sure have the same necessarily character as this may have as far as, in a couple of ways. A, maybe view shed, I'm not sure. I think you're going to propose fencing and there's going to be things that you can do to mitigate that, so I assume you can mitigate that. But one of the things we haven't talked about yet tonight, your application doesn't give us a lot of detail, but it references that you don't drain fluids from vehicles, that you assume that if they've been in an accident, that all the fluids drained at the site of the accident. I don't believe that to be true. If anybody's seen tow trucks with vehicles leaving an accident, I can tell you that's not necessarily true. So I think we need to understand a little bit more about the potentially hazardous materials and how you manage them. Your, your application does reference that you have a, I want to say, I think it was a drip, drip prevention plan. It wasn't a control plan for, but it says that you use your drip prevention plan to address any spills at, at your sites. I think we need to know a little bit more about that. I think we need to understand a little bit more about that. And maybe not as much for, you know, your, your day-to-day type business, but especially in the event of an unusual circumstance where you may have something like a hurricane and cars coming in, if there's any special steps that you take or, or measures that you would use when you're probably kind of just accepting cars that may or may not have been in places where they absorbed materials that might have been hazardous or something like that, just for us to understand it and understand kind of what that looks like. As far as the use itself, Michelle, I'm going to look at you. This board does not normally, unless it seems cut and dry to us, we usually defer to the zoning board to make any code judgments. Do you have a recommendation for us as far as whether the description that allows the other similar uses is close enough to this or should we refer it to the zoning board for a final determination for us?
Well, I'll just, just to be perfectly candid, when initially, when Copart came in, they came in as a zoning verification, so I didn't even know what Copart was technically. And that was back in February or January of 2017.
Okay.
So when I initially looked at, at just as a zoning verification, this is what we're proposing as a use, very small description of your use, not knowing much about the operation and putting it with our permitted uses, I would have said, no, you know, this does not meet, you know, the, the code because it is in an I1S district and just also a point of clarification, an I1S is pretty much exactly the same thing as an I1, except for an I1S allows airport uses. So that's the difference between the two of them. So in this case, I, I guess my thought was that maybe we refer to the zoning board appeals because there's two issues. There's one, they have to determine if the proposed use would be consistent with the generally accepted definition of the term light industry and then they also have to make a judgment on whether or not they think it would be beneficial to the town or, we have to make a determination of whether or not it would be beneficial to the town as a whole. So there's two separate questions to beat the criteria of the special permit. And it is a special permit, so it's not, it's not a, you know, permitted-
Like an as-of-right use.
Correct.
It's a special permit, okay. So, so with regard to hazardous materials, I think anybody who wanted to develop this site, we would have the same questions, right? What does your industry involve? What kind of chemicals do you, I mean, this is not an unusual or unreasonable question, but I think in your case, because you're, you're making statement up front that says you don't have any spills, but then you're telling us about your drip prevention plan and how you deal with small spills on site, again, I think we just need to understand that a little bit better. And it, if you provided that, it may or may not assist the zoning board in making a comparison to other uses allowed at the site to say, yes, it's minimal risk, it's similar, or, you know, no, we need to have some sort of special, and Scott, I'm looking at you, I don't know whether you could actually build drainage for a site like this or not that would have some sort of separator to keep chemicals out of the soil or what that would be. I don't know what that would look like because it just seems huge to me.
Not knowing their business exactly, but I mean, to me, the simplest thing is if somebody on-site witnesses a vehicle comes in and makes an assessment, oh, this thing's leaking, then they take it to a special process area.
Okay.
It may be paved, may have an oil-water separator.
Maybe one particular site.
We've done that over the projects and, and basically process that vehicle that may have a cracked crankcase or something like that. And then once it's been cleaned or signed off, take it to storage.
Okay.
So I don't think you want to contaminate 75 acres with a car here, a car there, and a car there, and a car there. I think you'd want to confine them, at least process them and then-
Well, I think, and, and you know, it's a fair question. I think, I think the issue is this, that, and this is what I've been told, and I'm, I'm not a Copart person, I'm an attorney, and I've been driving cars and I've had cars that have leaked even though they weren't in accidents, but I, I think the bottom line is this, that what, what I've been told and that, and there, I have to defer to the experts. And they have said that what happens is when there's an accident, what happens is at the scene of the accident, and Tom can probably confirm or embellish on this, but the scene of the accident, you have leaking fluids, okay? Then what happens is the vehicle's picked up, it's stored, so it doesn't go to Copart. It goes someplace else and it's there for three or four days or whatever until they figure out what the heck they're going to do with it. The insurance company comes out and says it's totaled, you know, get rid of it, whatever. So it's there. So then it's, it's a period of five, six, seven days before it ever gets to the Copart facility at which time they say, and what I've been told 99% of the time, that, that whatever fluids are leaking are out. They're done. Now, as far as what happens when they do an inspection, when it gets there, I don't know. I don't know, Tom, if you can talk about that, but just so that you know up now and then we'll have to confirm all this.
I can speak a little bit to it. Yeah, so when you're in an accident situation, you know, these things, the fluids that leak out at the accident are generally cleaned up by those tow companies that come and remove vehicles from the scene. And the cars do go to generally a tow and storage yard or a body shop or wherever. And they're going to be there for a period of three or four days until the, an adjuster calls it into us or somebody calls it in for us to go pick it up. And during that time, you know, people steal gas out of the cars, you know, use it for their own personal vehicles. But we do have protocols in place when the car comes in, visually inspect them and see if they are dripping. And then there's a response, so that we do have, I can supply you with the drip protocol and an actual spill response. And the, and these are not in response to, hey, every car that comes into our facility is leaking. We wouldn't be environmentally conscious if we didn't have these protocols in place. Accidents do happen, so we're prepared to deal with those. But there is a, there is an inspection process that goes on when the car comes in, the receivers note that if these vehicles are leaking, then we're going to take a step to try to stop it from leaking. But we have, the cars go, and they, they actually have a drip pan put underneath them. The drip pan stays with the car until it leaves. The drip pans are cleaned up when the car leaves and the fluids are disposed of, you know, Safety Clean or any number of vendors that handle these types of fluids. So we have those protocols in place and the typical scenario, you know, 99% of the time, the fluids that are going to leave that vehicle leave at the scene of the accident. We don't do anything to the car when it comes to agitate that situation. It's going to stay in a static situation at the yard. We're not going to handle it in such a manner to try to start something to leak that wasn't leaking.
You know, that was a question I meant to ask. How do you-
Forklifts, pick them up with forklifts.
You use forklifts?
Yeah.
So theoretically, a forklift could puncture a radiator, it could puncture anything once you start.
Theoretically.
So either, so.
Yeah. And that person would be, and that person would be out of a job.
But nonetheless, to your point though, if you're not going to handle a car in such a manner that might result in a spillage, I think just the mere fact that you use in forklifts could result in a spillage.
Sure.
Whether intentionally or not, it just could-
Sure.
Nature of the handling of the car, okay.
It would help us to understand what your spill response measures are, what your spill prevention measures are, and then if you have particular ways on site, if you notice an existing drip, just tell us how you manage that from start to finish.
Sure.
I think that would help us understand that a little better.
I just want to say one additional thing. I don't, I noticed that in the EAf mapper that, and I, and I, I know that a lot of these vehicles are over principal aquifer, but I believe this site is as well. So that's another just added level of concern that I have because if we're over the aquifer here, it's very sensitive that we don't have contamination on the site, obviously. So I don't know to what extent you guys on other sites may have had similar issues or have other things that, that, you know, there's other precautions that you can take. But I think this, because of the environmental sensitivity, not just the aquifer, but also just the large amount of surface water and wetlands on the site, I think it just adds a level of environmental sensitivity to the site that maybe some other sites you have don't have.
So I diverted us a little bit as we were starting to talk about uses that might be similar to the existing I1 zone, just to talk about the potential hazardous materials on site. Michelle, can we just wrap up what our next step should be as far as the actual determination of permitted use?
Well, I guess I, I would also defer to Tom here, but I guess the way I was thinking about it would be that you would probably need to get some sort of interpretation of whether or not this use would be considered a light industrial use. And then I suppose it would be the planning board that would determine whether or not it would be beneficial to the town as a whole. But the, I think the initial, I don't know, Tom, do you agree with that process because I think that that's the way-
Was that a referral to the ZBA or is that, okay.
I just want to ask, I mean, when you said special use permit, I thought special use permit could be twofold. One, it could be for a use that is clearly not within the, the way that is zone. Well, the second one would be that the town does not have any zone area that would meet these. In your mind, is there any one of the zoning codes that's available in town where this would not be a variance?
Not a variance, a special permit. Special permit just as the town board says, if you want a particular use, it has to meet certain standards.
This use is not contemplated anywhere in the list of permitted uses, however, in large part because this is a newer type of use. I mean, this is a relatively unique use, so it's not likely to be permitted exactly anywhere.
You know, we-
That was, that's the question. So the answer is it doesn't fit into any of the existing codes as you know them?
No.
Thank you.
In my opinion, I think we have to take the information we received this evening and analyze it to make a determination as to how to advise the applicant. Either that, it would be before this board to determine that you would grant this special permit, or a question in the use and then it goes to the zoning board for an interpretation. But I do think that counsel has made some good points. I think your example, and I think we have to mesh the pros and cons of how this use goes against some of the enumerated uses and come up with a conclusion, but I'm not right of the mind now that it goes immediately to the zoning board.
Okay. That's, and that's what I was trying to get, the sense of whether it's within our purview to say, you know what, we're comfortable with the way this is described or whether we needed to-
Well, I think for us to give you that guidance, we have to digest, because most of this information is the first.
That's fair.
You know, really good presentation in answering the questions, and I think we have to.
Is there anything else that we would need a request from the applicant, other than the spill response and the prevention?
I have just a bunch of, I mean, I gave, I gave them a letter, just kind of, I know that it was a very rough, you know, preliminary application, but I just noted some things that I thought that we might need additional information on.
Specifically for the zoning and the use, anything we need to be able to make a determination on that?
Well.
And then we can go over the other things for the site plan, but I want to.
I just, yeah, I mean, one of the questions, just if, if any of the existing site buildings are going to be reused for any purpose, are they all going, going away? So that question, if you could just, because that might go to the use. I think I'll, I think that's it for use. Okay.
And just, just to answer that question, which is a good one, I didn't point it out, but there are a number of structures on, on the property, both old residential structures and temporary structures that are used with the flea market. But the, the idea is to raise all the structures on the property, except for this lane, which is a metal building, a more recent construction that actually would be used just for some storage of, of pertinences.
Okay.
And if I just may, lastly, one of the things that we did look at was the, the sections of your code, I think it's 194-28, maybe it's 194-32, having to do with special permit conditions. And frankly, from my perspective, looking at those conditions, that's not the issue. I believe we can satisfy all of those. That's not a problem. The issue is the use.
Right.
That's it. And if we, if we know whether we're permitted use, and you have a provision in your code, which quite frankly, I think we, we do fall into, by analogy, then I think we, we can move forward. But if not, we'll find out soon enough, I guess, from you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just procedurally, I just have one question, and that is, you know, we'll put together the environmental protocols and some of the other broader issues which we think are associated with the use and resubmit. As your counsel noted, you're going to give this a little bit of thought, so I, I would, I would suspect that we're going to make our submission for your next meeting and show up, and then be able to be given, I'm assuming, some clear direction on what our next steps are for the use. Is that fair?
Next month, Michelle, we would be prepared.
And if, and if we have a decision ahead of time, we can certainly let you know before that. I don't think we need to wait for the meeting to be able to communicate.
What will be your deadline, what's the deadline for the?
For the next submission?
No.
To the end of the month.
Sorry?
The last working day of the month of INU's.
The last day of the month?
Working day.
Working day, got it.
That'd be, that'd be March 30th, right?
March 30th. 31st is a Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you good, Pam?
No.
No, because that's Good Friday.
That's Good Friday, we're closed, so make it the 29th.
It's the 29th.
Thank you.
Yes. Didn't think of that. Catch.
Thank you for the explanation and going through. That was very helpful to understand it much better.
Very good discussion. Aside from that, how did you like it?
I just know the 31st is Saturday.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Gasland East Fishkill Site Plan Route 82.
Of course, you're a busy guy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if the wait was long this evening.
That's all right.
Aren't you guys Stattler and Waldorf from the Muppets? Stattler and Waldorf from the Muppets.
Oh. I didn't have any of that.
Why I'm still here?
Beyond, we are.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Lapina with the Chazen Company, representing Gasland Petroleum this evening. Oh. Lost the connection.
Somebody didn't pay the bill?
Should I continue, or should I wait for that to be reestablished?
You know, I just.
Michelle, do we have the regular images of the plan that we can bring up?
I have the images, I have a plan.
I don't think we should need an internet connection to put them up on the deck, right? You can go ahead and start if you want. Well, Michelle's doing a.
I'll go back to this point here.
Thank you, Michelle. Sorry.
Gasland Petroleum owns the 1.33 acre parcel located on Route 82 at the northeast intersection of the Taconic State Parkway and Route 82. The site is located within a G1 business district. The site contains an existing 3,600 square foot garage, and was formerly a service, service station. The site was constructed according to county records in 1950. The site has an existing open spill number from December 6 of 1999.
I'm sorry, 19?
99.
99.
It had another documented spill in December 26 in 2017. The second spill was closed a day after with the DEC.
Do you know what happened?
It was, there were test pits conducted, and it was related to the fact that there was contamination from the previous spill, which was an indication. So they've only kept one spill number open.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
So closed is not synonymous with cleaned up. It just means.
Correct.
Consolidated.
For that one number, there's still the other number.
There's still the other, correct. So.
Have you provided us with the details on this spill?
We gave you a.
Michelle, did we have the spill?
Copy of the.
So we could look up the details on it?
Yes.
Yeah, we can look it up, but I haven't looked anything up yet.
Okay, that's fair.
For the record, it's spill number 991-0574. The site in general is located within a existing floodplain, and is bordered by the Hordak Hill Creek around the perimeter on the northern side of it. The proposal here is for the construction of a 2,000 square foot convenience store, and three pump islands, and eight parking spaces. The development would take place under the Section 194-85 gasoline filling stations, which provide specific requirements for former gas stations in need of remediation, and indicates a special use permit, it's not required for a site that requires remediation, as long as the proposed site plan does not increase any nonconformities associated with its project. The onsite stream was delineated by Ecological Solutions. They provided a letter report that accompanied our EAF, that there are no onsite wetlands within this 1.33 acre parcel. The access would be via Route 82, and it would be strictly limited to a right-in, right-out only. At this time, there is no left turn lane proposed along 82. There's been some dialogue with the DOT on this matter, and the DOT has given an initial conceptual approval of a right turn and right turnout only for this particular site. The, as I indicated, the site's in a floodplain. So we've raised the building to be two feet above the floodplain to meet the code here of the town of East Fishkill. So what you've seen here, there are some retaining walls, and there are some regrading proposed on the northern side of the project area behind the building. And there's also additional grading proposed on the eastern side as well. And the reason for that grading is for compensatory volumes, so that what we're filling by bringing up the site, we're making up in terms of the floodplain volume that we're removing elsewhere on the site, to do a balance of cut and fill almost within a floodplain that you're required to do by FEMA anytime you're doing work on a floodplain. The water for the site will be served by a well, and we are proposing, and we've already submitted to the DEC, for a speedies permit for an onsite small package plant for the treatment of the wastewater that would be generated by the convenience store. We have gotten some feedback from the DEC. They have asked us that if we can combine our submittal for not only the speedies permit application, but also a stream disturbance permit from the DEC for our outfall. So we are scheduling a meeting with the DEC to be onsite, so that they could verify the work conducted by Ecological Solutions, that there's no DEC wetlands on our site. And that would require us, in the event there is no DEC wetlands, we would need a stream disturbance permit. We'd also need a permit to work within their 50-foot buffer along with the speedies permit. We also understand that the town also regulates the 50-foot buffer around the Hordak Hill Creek, and we would be seeking a, a permit from the town as well.
So is there no wetland next to the stream because it has steep banks, or what? I mean, usually we see like some measure of wetlands along a stream.
Correct. That's, that's an accurate assessment of the onsite, Hordak Hill Creek on the site, that there are steep banks.
Okay.
So you're going to walk right up to it, solid ground, right up to the edge, and?
But they still, they still regulate 50 feet from that stream bank?
Correct.
Because this particular stream is also a trout stream. So it's Class CT, which means they take the buffer. If it wasn't a trout stream, they wouldn't take the buffer. But they do in this case. Okay.
Chris, a question if I could. How bad is the spill? How contaminated is the site? And by the way, thank you for cleaning this up. How bad is it?
You know, without going through and doing the entire environmental investigation, the spill hasn't taken place yet.
Okay.
So I, I can't, I can't ask, give you an accurate description as to the volume that's being removed here. I'm just not out of.
Okay.
You, you, you really don't know until you're actually involved in the removal of it, and.
We just have a spill, 300 gallons, in Blue Hill gas stations. It's costing us $1.3 million. We're still doing cleanup over there, by, by a truck. When you have a gas station, you have a spill, you can't tell how much until you open the ground. And as an owner, I'm not going to punch holes and open myself kind of worm, unless I do construction.
Okay.
Okay. This gas station, I, it used to be active up to 1999 AMICO. I remember the station well. And that gas station is 1950. And there's a spill number, 1999, wasn't double wall, steel tank, probably rotten. There's a pollution, and they used to fix cars there. And they used to store cars there, like a junkyard, the Thu family, for all those years. So to open the ground, just like open water, I didn't know how bad is it? How deep I got to go? We got to go to the underground, maybe we have a pollution water. This area is polluted.
Okay. Mitch, the, the report said that there was no record that the actual tanks had been removed. Do you think there's any chance the tanks are still there?
The, when I bought the place, they told me the tanks are not removed. I did do some digging. I didn't see any tanks. But I seen some oil stations. I seen double tanks, like two-story, one on top of each other, stacked each, on each other. And we did a gas station in Highland, where they moved the soil from one hole to put it to another fresh hole, and they covered it with a plastic. And usually, the DEC comes in, environmental comes in, they go out just testing, was the, do the boarding around the storage tanks. It's very vague. I mean, they used to do oil change. This site has a double door. They come from the front, and they used to go back from the back. It's all paved in the back. And it's double, double garages. Like two cars in each bay, one after the other. And they used to do a lot of heavy, and I don't think the DEC even went inside the building for any fluid, or transmission fluid, or oil change. This is the spill for outside the building. Nobody checked inside the building, where they had the bay, you know, all the concrete's been cracked up and everything. Still, there's oil cans, I clean much as I can.
Okay.
Chris, quick question. The onsite sanitary treatment, you mentioned submitted to the DEC. Don't you have to submit that to the Health Department as well?
Yeah, well, right now, what we're trying to do is get a criteria on what our effluent limits are, so we can select the proper unit to meet those units.
Okay.
To meet those criteria.
If the cleanup involves going into the stream buffer, is that typically allowed?
For the discharge of the.
No, for the clean, for the spill cleanup.
If the spill cleanup goes into the buffer zone, you're saying, of the?
Yeah.
It's allowed, but obviously, it's, you'd have to get a permit for that.
Right.
And normally, that's where, you know, as the, you know, it kind of.
It's almost 20 years since this spill was opened, so it could have migrated, right? And you may have to be in this.
The Cricket Valley Energy Plant's a great example of that. They have a cleanup adjacent to a DEC wetland, so they're doing the cleanup in the buffer as well, for the, for the onsite parking during the course of construction. That whole area has to be cleaned. So it's, usually, they go hand in hand, they're just, you have to get a permit to do, do the work.
Okay.
But that won't, you, you won't know that degree of excavation until you're actually in the ground removing the soil.
Yeah, no, okay. But that, but that can be part of, what I'm, I guess what I was trying to ask was, if it's necessary in order to complete the cleanup, you would be permitted to do that? You would be allowed to do that by the agencies? Because they want you to clean up?
He'd have to continue chasing that until they, they find what's in the ground acceptable.
Okay.
But also, Lori, during the cleanup, there'd be a person from DEC present at the site, plus with our, our environmental company. They will be on a daily basis until the cleanup is cleared, is finished.
Okay.
But you'd mentioned that you're, you're planning on using a well. I mean, have there been core, been sample wells done on the site?
There's an existing, there's an existing well on the site that's no longer active because there's no water on the property. We would be digging, we would be drilling a new well, and we would actually have probably put in at least 100 to 150 feet of casing in there as well.
To get past any.
To prevent some contamination that, getting into that, so.
And, and the use is, is just a gas station, or is it going to be like a deli, and?
It's going to be a convenience store in, have you, have you made the decision on the deli yet, or not?
Deli, we failing. Not really, that is semi-deli, just like breakfast, basically, not like a full.
Not a full-scale deli?
Not a full-scale deli.
So you mentioned traffic is just right in and right out?
Right in and right out only.
So traffic coming from the south or from the Taconic, what do you expect it's going to do?
Traffic coming south on the Taconic?
Coming, coming from the south.
Getting off the.
Or getting off the Taconic. It's going to have to pass by?
They will pass by.
Turn around?
If, if, if they turned around, they'd most likely perhaps turn around in the existing Dunkin' Donuts Plaza.
Okay.
But that, that's, that's the traffic light that I'm referring to. But we don't have the ability to get them into our site to take a left turn.
Got you.
That would be a, it'd be prohibited, a left turn.
Yeah.
And we, we've shown that on our site plan.
Prohibited by sign, right?
Yeah.
You're not saying you're going to put a curb down the middle of the road?
No, we're not putting a curb down the middle of the road.
Okay.
We've got the signage on both sides of the road here.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, realistically, people will turn in.
Yes. Yes.
And I'm just saying.
And they'll make a left coming out of it, too.
Put a roundabout there, Lori. Sorry?
Hey, get with the program.
So I take it you, you don't need any special permissions from the owner of that parking lot, or any other thing to get that traffic pulled in there?
Unfortunately, it's not, we don't have the ability to cater to that traffic. If they decide to frequent our site, how they, I don't know how, you know, perhaps they may go and, they may go up and turn within the park, the parking lot, or up at the AMP, or they may come onto Arthur'sburg Road and do whatever they may do and turn into the neighbor's driveway.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I did wanna mention here is, with regards to the storm water, we've incorporated, uh, some stormwater features that consists of, uh, what's they're called? They're called media filters. And we selected one that particularly focuses on heavy metals, oils, greases, and organic compounds associated with this particular use. It's called a zeolite, pyrolite, and granular activated carbon filters.
That's for which part?
This is for all the stormwater from the impervious area would go through that.
Okay.
That's because of the proximity to the stream?
It's good proximity to the stream, and it's, 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 it's good practice, you know, in, in terms of the proximity to the stream, and the, you know, kinda what you just brought up in the last application is, what do you, how do you handle potential drips that may occur, or anything of that nature?
Okay. Um, I think the one other thing, maybe a few other things we need to talk about, but let's, um, let's talk about the law itself that permits you to build this. It's currently under, I don't know, Tom, if you wanna describe, but it's currently under litigation. We wanna make sure you, as the applicant, understand.
Well, there's a challenge to it, but there's no stay, so they're free to proceed. So, um, there is a Article 78 proceeding against the enactment, uh, and, but there is no stay from the court, so there's no, nothing to prevent the applicant from proceeding.
Did we want the applicant to understand that the litigation is pending, and if it's successful, the law could be repealed?
You're well aware of that.
I'm more than aware of that, and the...
Okay.
Article 78, usually competition, which is very glorious, and you have the same attorney I have.
Okay.
You know, I'm baffled by it.
Okay.
Bean and bean, I mean, I just...
Just as, as long as you understand...
I understand it perfectly.
That gets interesting.
Okay.
It's very interesting, yes.
Because it dramatically changes what you might be able to do here if that law is repealed. As long as you know, I, I just want, wanted to make sure you knew. Okay. The Taconic setback, um, do you have that, the Taconic buffer?
Yes, it's 100 feet, uh, and we meet that setback right there.
Okay. Does that include to the exit ramps, too? Because I thought the exit ramps were also part of the, part of, considered part of the Taconic, and I, I wasn't sure that you had the, the 100-foot from the exit ramp.
There's the 100-foot from the...
Uh, Taconic exit ramp, and we have no building within that.
In that.
Okay. So, so no building, but I think that the setback requires no structure at all, right? Which, if that's driveway or whatever, we, we just need to understand that, because I think we're not, we're not allowed to put those types of things in this setback.
I don't know if the driveway is classified as a structure according to the code.
I'll show you the language, and we can talk about that, that, in the code.
Are you expanding the impervious, existing impervious surface with that driveway, or are you within the original paved surface with that western driveway?
Um, let me see here. Press something, I'll tell you. I got it right here. The, the existing, well, I could, I could bring it up on there. We are with probably, give or take, a foot, plus or minus, of the existing pavement there.
The language of the code allows you, plus to fall under the original bulk regs.
Yes.
So, we may need to make sure that you stay within the original footprint. If, if...
All our impervious on this side is within the original footprint. Because of the access that the DOT is dictating here in the right of way, I may be over, plus or minus a foot.
Okay. All right, so we'll have to...
The site, I'm okay with it.
But generally, within the existing site should be okay? Yeah, because the, the language of the... As their grandfather? Yes, exactly. Got it. Okay.
This is okay here.
We just need to make sure that maybe, and if you've done this, I apologize, I didn't see, but we may just need to overshadow the, the original limits over your current plan, just so we can see that you're, you're staying within it. I'm not sure one...
You want an overlay for that?
Yeah, I mean, we're just, I can, I'll, I can look at it if you have something even on the computer, or you can show me on a layer you can just take off or put on.
Yeah, I could, I could put a layer on for you.
Okay, that's great. So, Michelle, that takes care of that concern, as long as they're within the original site.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Let's talk about the parking and ADA access. Number of spots as it relates to the square footage of the building?
There's eight spots, which is one for every 250...
And six filling positions. So, that's 14 altogether on a 2,000-square-foot building.
Correct. So, the code says one spot for every 250 square feet of general retail. So, it meets that technically, but then it has the additional six fueling spaces. We know that at some of the other gas stations that it's tight for parking, so, but this does meet the code.
Including employee parking? Because you're gonna have presumably a deli, and you're gonna have a concession counter, right, for...
It doesn't, we don't, wouldn't, the, the code just says one space for every 250 square feet, so it doesn't actually have an aside for employee parking in this particular use.
I know this site is tight. Where are your ADA spaces?
The ADA space is right here, adjacent to the building.
Okay.
And then we have the handicap accessible.
And a clear walkway in without any other...
Correct. Here, here's the accessible space here. Here's the handicap ramp here, coming right into the front door.
Okay. And I'm assuming there's nowhere else onsite you could put additional parking?
Uh, one of the things we're gonna talk to the DEC about, uh, is the possibility of maybe doing, um, some parallel parking along here.
Okay. I mean, if you're doing right in and right out only, you can control the flow of the site, right? You only need like one traffic lane.
Yeah, the, the width of this current is based upon the tractor-trailer coming in, not necessarily the...
Cars.
The cars coming in, and, you know, the tractor-trailers are gonna come in here, they're going to park here and unload, and then access to rail.
Okay.
But one of the things we do wanna talk...
Can you do it up on top, Chris, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. One of the things we do wanna talk to the DEC about is the ability to put some parallel parking in this location here. It's gonna encroach within their 50-foot, uh, buffer area, and would extend the pavement outside of further, further than where it currently is.
Is there a curb along that line, that edge?
There's, there's curb along that edge.
There is.
So...
You would trap anything?
I'd be trapping it and bringing it back into my site anyway.
Because it's a trout stream.
Oh, my man.
But I didn't, I didn't wanna be presumptuous and assume that they would approve something of that, so I didn't show it at this stage.
That's fine. But you, you are, you are talking to them about some additional spots if you need...
Yeah, we, we, we wanna try to utilize, this is the best location here.
Okay.
We're trying to squeeze in two more.
There are less, less employees than the former gas station. Used to be like four, five mechanics and people pumping gas. Now, we're going to have three employees, two during the day and one, one during the nighttime. So, the max employees, if you have breakfast in the morning for a deli, will be two people, and then evening is one person. And this is the called C outlet, it's not a high-volume station, so there's one down the road, and it's only one-way traffic.
Is it 24 hours a day?
I would love to. Usually, safety 24 hours a day. I mean, I'm sure the guys...
We proposed it, but obviously, it's subject to the approval of the planning board.
Okay.
Of the parkways, I think safety for people.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people on the parkway, the low on gas, they wanna see 24-hours gas station.
Yeah.
I do have it at 52, 24 hours.
Right. Okay. Is that, do you have your hours of operation in the application? I don't remember reading that.
We do, we've proposed...
It's in there?
We proposed 24.
Okay. Do we have your lighting plan, too?
Yes.
And you're following the greenway for the canopy lighting?
Yes.
And I would just say, um, because of your closeness to the stream and the potential for the Indiana habitat, which I know you guys are doing an, an assessment right now...
Correct.
Any lighting, if it could just be shielded in the back, they, they can just stick like a piece of metal so that it doesn't go...
Nothing goes through the...
To the stream.
Okay.
Exactly, so kinda stay, and it, it actually helps keep it, the light forward.
We can do that. I think the only area of concern is right over here, anyway, from our lighting plan, because we have this shielded on this side.
I think, Chris, just making sure, did you receive the comments from our Conservation Advisory Council?
Yes, and...
As well as our Fire Advisory Board, which at this time just had the recommendation of a Knox box?
Okay, yes, I think I have those as well. And we, we actually...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not correct about it. It says the FAB recommends the building be provided with a monitored fire alarm system and a Knox, Knox box. If you need those comments, we can get you a copy of them.
And I, I also received the comments from CAC, and we, we spoke last week for about 30 minutes on the phone. There was a number of questions he had and just some clarification, so...
Okay.
And he asked that I follow up with him after our meeting with the DEC as well, determined.
Okay. All right, good. And then, um, you have Michelle's letter, and I think was there also, did you, we have a letter from Morris for this one yet?
I didn't get your letter, but I got Susan. I, I did receive Morris...
We have a Morris letter.
We, I received Morris's letter.
Yeah.
You did, okay.
Yep.
I didn't...
I just wanna make sure you have all of the, all of the letters. This'll also go to the ARB.
I don't know if they have a Hudson Valley Engineering letter on it.
We, we don't have any comments.
I don't know if we've done, have we looked at traffic yet?
So, I'll say something about traffic on this. If you remember during the Arthur'sburg Corner study, um, they contemplated development on the side of the road as part of that study, so that was, that was considered in the build-out when they did the numbers for that traffic light. So, it was always contemplated, and in fact, that's what helped make, um, that traffic light made the warrants that were required in order to install that light. So, the, the development of the site was always contemplated as part of that study.
Okay.
And what is the number 30? Isn't there like a traffic, there references like a net gain of 30 cars?
So, you, you have, uh, you have the anticipated traffic volume associated with your type of business.
Right.
And then, that it would draw.
Okay.
And then you take a look at what your existing pass-by traffic is.
Okay.
And it would draw.
So, that was just the generic, it was not based on...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have just a couple more comments, um, just real quick. One is the refuse container.
Yes.
Um, we're just a little bit concerned about that location. I know it's really difficult for you to, um, locate it anywhere else, but I, maybe that's another, something you can talk to DEC about, because that location is probably gonna be tight there.
Where would you...
For the pickup, or too close to the buildings, or...
Um, I think it's gonna be really hard for a truck to maneuver in there, especially if there's, you know, people queuing at the pumps.
People at the building station, yeah.
We can, uh, we can look at other alternative locations.
I mean, I don't know that you're gonna have another option, but I just...
Yeah, it's, it's most ideal, and we, we took a look. It, it works from the truck movement standpoint for a railcarding vehicle that we use to maneuver that. You're right, depending on the time.
Well, the pickup is one day, one day, we put two dumpsters inside.
Well, do you have room for two dumpsters in there? It doesn't look like it.
We have, no, we have one dumpster inside of there.
Don't you need one for recycling, one for waste?
But with, for the recycling one, we would go with the smaller, the smaller, smaller one in there. We wouldn't go with the, like, I look at, when you, you, he was talking about C stores and A stores before of that nature.
I'm looking at...
We, we have an A store here, we have a, a refuse area that is about 12 to 14 feet wide.
Okay.
And the sizes of the recycling and the refuse containers are larger. In this particular case, we're looking at one that's probably about five foot for the refuse, and then the remainder of the space would be activated by the recycling.
Which would be, what's the remainder of the space? What's the width of that currently?
That would be four feet.
How much?
The remainder would be four feet.
And a truck can go up to that and lift a four-foot front, yeah?
Yeah, or they, we, we've had some where they're just working with the 55-gallon containers as well.
So, how often, do they, they come more than once a week, or what's the...
In my experience, the, I thought he's saying 18 feet wide, you should put two dumpsters once a week.
Right.
And this gas station is not 2,000 square foot all retail. It's about 500, between, almost 500, 600 foot between the storage, electrical room, and the, the walking coolers. And you get the gondolas, the counters, you wouldn't have less than 1,000 foot retail.
It'd be similar to what you have on Vassar Road where they come once a week, and it has a...
Vassar Road, yes.
And that has a Dunkin' Donuts in there.
I just think that needs to be taken a hard look at, and what about grease, what about a grease dumpster, or grease receptacle?
We have no grease.
You're cooking in the morning, though, right?
Huh?
You're making breakfast sandwiches?
No, no. Usually, we put the grease trap either under the sink or outside, depends on the building department.
The grease trap.
That's, that's the grease trap for your sink.
That's the grease trap for the cooking, that's, we have that on the plans.
Right, but like down in John Jay, don't you have a separate grease?
John Jay, we, we, we did a full deli, we have a separate grease, yes. And same thing...
There's a grease trap outside this building, right here, associated with...
You're talking about a grease container, is what I'm talking about? So, where does that go?
Grease tank for the cooking.
That's what I'm saying, it's right over here.
Yeah, it's right over there.
There's a grease trap right here on our plans.
Above grade with an enclosure type thing?
No, we have, we have a grease trap. We don't have a grease, holding grease. They're, they're gonna have a cold deli there for sandwiches, and they're gonna be...
John Jay gas station, you have a...
John Jay, we have hot food.
You have hot food.
Yeah. Eggs is hot food, sausage is hot food.
No, but it's not oil, it's not frying.
Okay.
It's the difference is when you do...
So, there's never gonna be one of those containers there?
But this is...
That's gonna pop up?
There usually, sometime, we put one underneath the three-bay sink.
Because I just wanna take kinda what we learned down there, make sure we don't...
He, he's referring to the holding container.
No, I understand that. We do it both ways. Sometime, we put a 1,000-gallon outside, and 99 percent, even Dunkin' Donuts, but we have a small, little container that it was, under the ground, in the concrete.
They'll have to address that.
Under the three-bay sink.
So, it doesn't come up after the fact? We want that all addressed.
We do one now in Beacon, in 52, fiscal.
You know, it would help us, can you give us a floor plan of what you're actually gonna have in there, so that we can, like, we can look at all these different things and figure out if we need to ask you any more questions, because I think that would help us.
But the other, but the other thing, let me just run through this quick, we don't have to hammer it out tonight, but like, your air, if there's gonna be an air pump, there's gonna propose to be a vacuum, like, like popped up down below?
We have the.
Let me, let me just finish. Pro, selling propane, you know, out of the cage propane tank, firewood, kitchen sink, you know, all these things tend to pop up after the fact that we're not looking at, at the planning board. We want to make sure we.
We have that vacuum and the air pump showing currently.
Let's talk about it now and let's figure out if it fits or it doesn't fit.
The air pump, we, we must have by Western, it's a law, by Western measure.
Got to locate it.
Yeah, we, we have the air pump.
You have to approve where you're going to locate it.
We have the air pumps and vacuum show on the plans.
You're going to have to have vacuum.
Don't have to have vacuum, right?
I don't have to have that vacuum, but yeah, I have to have it by law. What else you say?
If you're going to sell propane or firewood.
Firewood, no propane, yes.
You got to locate that.
Yep.
We don't want to have a sidewalk, you know, four foot wide for pedestrians and then all of a sudden propane takes up three feet of the four feet.
No, we, we would put those on the side of the building.
By the dumpster there.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the initial application submitted before you just, for the record, does not have cooking or any deep frying going on within the building. That's kind of clarified in our EAF just for everybody.
Okay.
If we're going to modify that after tonight's meeting, I'll have this conversation with them.
No, we.
I just want to clarify for the record what's been presented to you.
Understood, so if you can provide the floor plan, you can show us that we understand that there's counter space and sinks and no cooking surface or?
If he changes his mind between now and then, I'll let you know. He'll be showing the plan.
That's fine, okay. So you've got a few things you're going to do, it sounds like the habitats study is in process?
It's actually completed and we're ready to submit that.
Okay.
So I can submit that to you.
Okay, so we have that, you're looking at the refuse location, a lighting plan, a floor plan. Do we have for our application, I know you've told us tonight what the intended use was, but I, I think just, let's make sure that we update the narrative of the application and just explain it's going to have a small deli, but it's not going to be cooking, it's going to be for breakfast only.
This is like a continental deli, like a continental breakfast.
Okay.
It's not a full deli.
Let's just have you clarify that then in your.
The bagel cream, you know, bagel, butter roll and, and eggs.
Okay.
And it's not like full balloon with.
No grill.
Well, but if it's eggs, are you?
Well, there has to be.
No, no grill, no, no, no frying. Grab and go and it's electronic grill, it's not deli.
We'll clarify it.
Okay. Okay. And then, go ahead, Michelle, sorry. I was just going to say, we need to make a decision. I, I don't know if we want to circulate now for a lead agency or if we want to wait until they have submitted and you get more revised plans. Is it going to take you long to resubmit the plans?
No, we're, these.
Do you have the floor plan already kind of laid out that it's something?
Yes.
Okay. And you have the habitat study ready to go, so.
Habitat study is.
Michelle, maybe we could make the motion, but motion on the assumption that we get the updated information from you that we've talked about tonight. I'd like to send all of it at once, it's just better that way. Right.
I, I think the lighting plan, with the exception of this, it's a small little area right here, we go down to .02. So, I mean, we're like five feet in back of the refuse area. I think it's sufficient enough for circulation without needing to modify. If that's one of the concerns of the board, I'd just clarify now that.
The only issue I was thinking is if you, if the DEC and you decide to change anything, but they would be aware of that theoretically, it's just that.
I mean, we, we just go down to zero, five feet away from the back of the refuse. Everywhere else over here, we're at zero along your, it's a very small area.
No, I just meant the disturbance area might change if you, if they allow you to do the parking.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, that, since you're going to be meeting with them specifically on that, when, when is the meeting, is it soon?
It's probably going to get postponed because of the snow. We had our first one postponed because of the snow. So.
I mean, we could circulate, we could, I mean, you could declare, I'm sorry, not circulate, but declare yourself, your intent, and then we can figure out when to circulate, when the plans are. But I, I want to make clear, we circulate once we have some of this additional information, rather than having agencies come back and say they want more information, it's easier if we can do one.
You, you'll have the revised plans by Thursday of next week.
Okay.
Soft copy.
Soft copy to, I remember the board and I need to talk to Pam together.
With however many hard copies Pam needs for the planning office, to be clear. Okay, so do I have a motion to, sorry?
I'm sorry, just real quick, I just want to touch upon, we did a preliminary look at the floodplain development permit that'll be required. And just to let Chris know, and you'll get the copy of this memo tomorrow, we just wrapped it up today. But just a couple of the concerns was just to take a look at buoyancy restraints on buried fuel tanks, you'd probably do that anyway, but.
Yeah.
Any components of your septic or.
Correct.
Anything that you got subsurface, take a look at buoyancy.
But she said you're not doing septic, right? You're doing a.
Well, he's going to have a tank that's going to.
We'll have a concrete tank that'll load up.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I think there was a concern about your stormwater system, whether or not during a flood or a rain event, it would be submerged and be able to discharge the site. So, you know, we'll have to take a look at that. I'll, I'll get you this memo.
Okay.
And then scour protection to be provided on these retaining walls and, and maybe the backside of building, whatever, just to preserve them in case of floodwaters. And special care for your concrete washout area that you illustrated on the plan, but because we're so close to the stream, just to.
Yeah, we have some additional notes on that too.
Maybe beef that up a little bit.
Yep.
But we'll get you a copy of this tomorrow.
Okay, that's great.
But all in all, we should be able to issue that permit provided you meet all that stuff.
Yeah, we're approximately, the compensatory of volume is about 750 yards.
Okay, that's another comment in here.
And we can give you those calculations.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Scott, what is that, the permit called again?
Floodplain development.
So do I have a motion to circulate for lead agency?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. What we'll do is, as soon as you have the revised plans in, Michelle essentially complete, we'll, she'll coordinate with you and we'll help make sure that gets sent out.
Excellent.
Chris, I need one.
And then, Michelle, I think one more discussion and then we would be able to schedule for a public hearing. But I, I want to see the revised plans, it sounds like there may be some things that move around on the site, so I think one more, one more discussion.
Do you, do you want me to for now show that parking? Those two additional spaces?
Sure.
I would.
I would show them as tentative, pending, like approval, you know, you could just put, put a footnote on it that it's pending approval or of a permit to develop in the setback.
You've done circulation, it shows that a fuel truck can navigate that site without having to back out onto 82? You've done that, okay. That's assuming the cars are, they are getting fuel?
And the cars are there getting fuel, we have enough space between the two to pull in.
Okay, okay, good.
Excellent. Do you have other questions for us?
I think that's it for now, I've got my work.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
Basically, my gas stations, we usually have a small grease trap tank underneath the three basins. Sometime when we have a deli, we have 1,000 grease trap outside of it.
Okay.
The NJ made me put 1,000.
Health department did, yes.
Yes, health department. But to be here in this manner of this kind of gas station, we need only the small one.